Good evening and welcome to the July 22 meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver. Mayor Sinanian.
Here.
Today's flag salute will be led by Councilman Dave Weaver.
Please join with me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for the invocation. Tonight we pray for the council's thoughtful and careful considerations of the matters before them. We pray for the victims of Malaysian Flight 17 and request solace for those left behind and Malaysian Flight 370 which disappeared in March of this year. Please provide a resolution to the uncertainty and comfort the loved ones who still do not know the fate of that flight. We also pray for the two bank employees who were injured and the one who perished as a result of the bank robbery in Stockton and ask for your healing powers for family and friends of the victims. Finally, we thank you for all the good you have bestowed upon our city and ask for your considered guidance, continued guidance and blessings for Glendale and its proud citizens tonight and always.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. May we have the report, please?
The agenda for the July 22, 2014 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, July 17, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you.
3A's agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, July 29, 2014.
Yes. Ms. Veers?
Mayor Sinanian, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have known business agenda items for July 29. In the evening, our council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a few consent items. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is pump replacement project at Dietrich and Glen Oaks Pump Stations. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, hauling and disposal of construction debris for Glendale Water and Power. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, technical support services for the new GWP Water Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System, known as SCADA. General Manager of GWP, recommendation to support the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. And this is specifically regarding the State of California's Preferred Alternative Four in the draft environmental impact statement. And this is to improve water supply reliability and environmental restoration. Under adoption of ordinances, we have ordinance amending certain chapters of the GMC relating to GWP water rates and charges. Under action items, we have two items. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, implementation of Phase Two of the Water Conservation Ordinance. Fire Chief regarding weed abatement charges for 2013-14 fiscal year. And we have one item under hearings, Director of Community Development, and this will be continued from this evening. Mr. Mayor, Appeal of Planning Commission Approval of Standards Variance Case Number PVAR. And this is for the property located at 1551 Glenmont Drive. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Veers. What's the next item on the agenda?
At 3B is Mayor's Commendation to the 2014 Great American Cleanup Day Sponsors.
And who do we have here? This side.
Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Sam Engel. I am the Chair of the Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale as of nine days ago. I am pleased to come here as my, kind of my first official actionist chair to help recognize the sponsors of this year's Great American Cleanup program. The Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale has committed to providing and promoting quality neighborhoods through beautification civic pride programs. It's been around since 1964, having been appointed by you at that time. It was created, as I said, by the City Council. The Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale has five areas of focus. Graffiti elimination, litter reduction, community beautification, recycling and sustainability, for which we won multiple awards at the State of California under former Councilmember Ginger Brimberg, and citizen engagement. These areas of focus were established by our City Council when the committee was initially established and continue to provide the core of the committee's purpose with this community. The Great American Cleanup is one of our signature programs and is the only one of everything that we do that addresses all five areas of focus. We hold the Great American Cleanup as part of the nationwide program operated by Keep America Beautiful. This year, on May 17, over 400 volunteers were deployed throughout our city to remove litter from our streets, paint over graffiti in multiple locations, including our pedestrian tunnels, signs and other public facilities, to build gardens in schools and parks, and for the first time, to collaborate with our Arts and Culture Commission to help implement a utility box mural program in downtown Glendale, of which we can all be proud. It's outstanding whenever you go down there. All programs of the committee involve partnerships, the first being the partnership between the city organization and the committee, which raises funds and community support to operate the programs apart from the city's budget. And that's why we're here tonight. We could not operate programs like the Great American Cleanup without the support of our sponsors, some of whom have supported these efforts for over 20 years. So tonight, we're going to recognize those sponsors who made this year's event such a success. Now, I'd like to call forward and mention these communities' partners for their continued support. And as I call them, if they're here, I'd like a representative from each organization to join me up here who will accept the commendation that you will present on behalf of the council. This year, for our gold level sponsors, we have the Walt Disney Company and the Glendale Association of Realtors.
Amen. There. Will you accept on their behalf?
I will certainly accept on their behalf. I will point out, the Walt Disney Company has been supporting this event for years and years and years, but not as long as the Association of Realtors. Association of Realtors has been supporting this event continuously since 1989 annually, from a high point of some $25,000 several years ago to this year's donation. At our silver level, the Glendale Management Association, the Jewel City Kiwanis, Glendale Youth Alliance, and our own Glendale Water and Power. So if there are people here from those agencies, I'd like them to...
We have GMA and GYA, Kiwanis, anyone from Kiwanis, and Glendale Water and Power is here.
I will point out, there's nobody here from Kiwanis. They have been our cooks for this event, and they have cooked hot dogs and hamburgers since 1988.
Oh, wow.
Every year, they are regular cooks. I'm sorry, they're not here tonight to receive your recommendation. Mayor?
I think all of these organizations deserve commendation from the City of Glendale for the great sponsorship that they provide for this great cause. And I'm going to read one of these commendations because they all say the same thing, only the recipient is different. And in case of Glendale Association of Realtors, Walt Disney, they're gold level sponsors, and the rest are silver level sponsors. So the commendation reads as follows. "To Walt Disney Company, in recognition of your gold level sponsorship of Glendale's 26th Annual Great American Cleanup, on behalf of the City of Glendale, we appreciate your commitment and support for this great event." Thank you, Mayor Sinanian. So once again, thank you very much. Thank you for organizing it, and thank you for the sponsorship. I would like to ask my colleagues to help present these commendations. Yeah? Ms. Friedman, for you, and I'll come down with you also.
It means a lot, even though a couple of them aren't here, we'll get an opportunity to present these on your behalf, and it means a great deal to them to receive these recognitions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, what's next?
At 3C is presentation of Star graduates Sally Reyes, Santino Espirito, and Albert Luna.
Good afternoon, City Council. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time. We're here to congratulate Sally Reyes and Santino Espirito for graduating from our STAR program, which is our police youth program. Santino Espirito started STAR in January 2012. Throughout his time with STAR, he had maintained the highest grade point average in the program. Aside from Santino's excellent academic achievement, he has also displayed a respectful attitude towards everyone, including his peers. Officer Jackson, who has known Santino since he started STAR, describes Santino as a perfect role model. We're sad to see Santino leave the program, but know that he will continue to be successful as he enters high school and in whatever he decides to pursue thereafter. Sally Reyes started STAR in June of 2011, and throughout her time in STAR, she has always, she has maintained an above-average grade point average. Sally is an intelligent girl, always gets along with everyone. Officer Jackson described Sally as someone who is a great leader and can see her taking on leadership positions in the future. We have no doubt that Sally will continue to do well in whatever she decides to pursue. On a personal note, I want to thank both their parents for raising good children, and they're both positive role models for our community. I'm sad to see them leave, but I'm very proud of them both. Thank you two for your contributions with STAR, and again, being good students. You guys were always on top of things, and good luck to you guys both.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have pens at least?
Sure.
You gotta give them to him, Mayor.
I have to ask, how about Albert Luna? He's on the agenda.
He's not old yet. He's just 13.
Oh, okay.
Our program ranges from 9 to 14, and he's not 14 yet.
Okay.
He'll definitely be here next year for graduation.
Great. Okay, perfect. Thank you. We have a new council member today, technically new, who's a former...
Scott. You got it.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words as a former, as a retired teacher? Okay, don't leave yet. One second.
Stay.
Paula Devine wants to say a few, she's a retired teacher. Our new council member would like to say a few words.
Just like to congratulate both of you on your graduation and the officers as well for putting this STAR program out there for the kids. I wish you luck. I know that this is a step in the right direction for you, and according to the officer, you've been exemplary student, so I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
They would like to have pictures with the council.
That'd be great.
For the council. Do you want to...
Want to come back?
Yeah.
We stay seated, Nick. Get the city seal out.
If you can go inside, too.
It's good to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Dunn?
At 3D is appointment of Michael Harugi as a member of the Civil Service Commission. This was Councilmember Weaver's nomination.
Ah, you're here, Michael.
Yes.
And we'll be also providing the oath of office tonight.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Michael Harugi, who's standing here. I didn't expect him to come. Give you a little of his background. University of California Berkeley degree and University of California LA BA in jurisprudence. He is an attorney with the Harugi Law Group in Glendale in the 114 North Brand Building. Just so you know, some of his background, we all have it, but the people should know. He's a member of the US District Court Central, Northern, Southern, and Eastern District of California, American San Fernando Valley and LA County Bar Association, Southern California Bankruptcy Insurance of Court.
California ends of court.
A what?
California ends of court.
Never heard of that one. I'm sure our has. Central District Consumer Bankruptcy Attorney Association, US Court of Appeals, the 11th and 9th Circuit, United Mortgage BD Tears Association America, National Association Consumer Bankruptcy Attorney. He's the managing chair role of his group and the senior associate and two others. He has extensive knowledge and experience resolving employment disputes through civil, administrative, and ADP. Is that what you call it? ADP?
Alternative Dispute Resolution, ADR.
But I'm not an attorney, so I'm lost on that. He is also born in Glendale and raised in Glendale, grown product. And you were in the Marine Corps, too?
I was.
In the Marine Corps. So I think he'd be a fine addition to the Civil Service Commission, and I'm putting his name in nomination.
Does that need a second?
Yeah, I think you do.
Let's have roll call.
It doesn't? You need a roll call?
Yeah, roll call, though.
Either way, roll call.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Congratulations to...
Since he's here, it's unusual. Would you like to say anything?
Sure.
Do you know what you're getting into?
Probably not, but like anything in life, you know, you go forward to the best. That's right. So, no, thank you, Councilmember Weaver, for the appointment. Thank you to the mayor and the council for approving me. As Dave mentioned, I am, have been, have lived in Glendale most of my life. This is a great city that has given me so much, and I look forward to giving back and serving in this appointment to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Oh, I didn't really have to do that.
Hi, Michael Harugi.
Salmo Square.
Salmo Square.
Did you pronounce it?
And I will support and defend the Constitution of the states.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That you bear true faith.
That I'll bear true faith.
And allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of California.
That you take this obligation freely.
Take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
You will well faithfully.
And that I will well faithfully.
The charged duties accomplished.
The charged duties that I have agreed to.
Congratulations. Thank you. You will now get indoctrinated in the days ahead.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
Nice to get Michael. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is the consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull 4B.
Any others?
I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes.
The reason I ask for 4B to be pulled is because...
May I write it into the record, please?
Yes, please do.
Okay. At 4B is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding proposed change in rodenticide policy to discontinue use of anticoagulant pesticides for road and control on city properties and discontinuing the use of contract supersized blocks, a second-generation anticoagulant pesticide, and replacing it with Fast Track, a non-anticoagulant and safer product alternative. And at 4B1 is motion to note and file report.
Thank you. The problems inherent with the use of these products came to my attention a couple of years ago, and at the time, I asked the city to look into replacements for the poison that we use in our parks and other parts of the city. And at the time, I was told that it was impossible, it couldn't be done, we'd be putting children at risk in the playgrounds, yada, yada. So earlier this year, this issue came up again when it became known that the mountain lion that lives in, I think it's Griffith Park, is very sick because of the use of these poisons. What happens is these poisons are eaten by rodents. The rodents are eaten by mountain lions or coyotes or owls or other animals that are higher up in the food chain, and those animals then become very, very sick and sometimes die. So when you see coyotes in your neighborhood that are hairless and that look really scrawny and sick, that's often from the, because they've ingested these poisoned animals. And the target of these, of this poison is not to kill the mountain lions and the owls and all of these other predators out there. It's just to target the rats that can spread in the parks. So this time, I sort of insisted to staff, I really want you to take this seriously and go out and see what other products are on the market that don't work their way up the food chain, that don't poison people's dogs and cats or any other animal that happens to eat a rat that's been infected by these poisons. They did so, and it's my understanding that they did find safe alternatives that only poison the animals that are being targeted and don't work their way up into the food chain, which I'm very glad to hear. I was also told that we trap animals in certain places, so we don't use the poisons at all in some locations, which I was glad to hear as well. So I wanted to pull this item because I know that it's of concern to many people in the community. I don't know what other cities have followed, have also done this. I know that many cities are looking at it. I always like to think that Glendale's the first, but we may very well not be. But I hope that our example is taken by other communities and that they do the same thing, given that there are other products that are out there that are a lot safer and don't have these unintended consequences. I would like for a report back at some point to find out how the program's working with the new products, to make sure that it also is still being deemed safe and that it's doing what we needed to do. So at some point in the future, maybe we can hear back about that. Thank you for letting me pull the item. I would like to move 4B.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, would it be okay just to remind folks at this point that, again, 9C, the standards variance case at property located at 1551 Glenmont is being continued to next week?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Okay, next item, City Council and Staff Comments. Yes, Mr. Weaver?
There's a couple of things I'd like to talk about. Over the years, I've been accused of a lot of things in the press, by the press, and as usual, I've taken it, I have to. But when you, somebody writes in insulting the profession of civil engineering that I am in, and the press prints it without verifying anything that's written, I want to say something about it. Give you some excerpts of the article that was in the press. So the company that broke the water line at Honolulu and Verdugo should be fined. Glendale Water and Power should be sued, along with the Crescent Valley Water District. Maybe there should be a moratorium on all local road construction until the drought emergency is lifted. If we are going to have incompetent engineers in charge of important projects, maybe work should be limited to times and places where the consequences of their ineptitude will be minimized. I don't know what they are doing. Little did anyone know that there were, they were fixing to create a full-blown disaster. It is time for the proper authorities to investigate this Chinatown-like incident. Is there some sort of corruption going on here? If so, someone should go to jail. Or is it just plain stupidity? Those are some of the excerpts of the article that was printed. Since I said I am a civil engineer, the guy that wrote this, all he had to do was check out what actually happened, as I did. Let me tell you how it happens. When you're going to do any underground work, and in this case, we issued a contract to do that work up there, we voted on it here. Our contractor is responsible for calling dig alert. They're representative in Southern California for the State of California, which by law they exist. Their job is to notify all the utilities that might be underground. They have our plans that show some, but you can't always guarantee that the utilities are located where they're supposed to be. As built, I've found out over my 30-some years in the federal government, a lot of times, they're not in the right spot. Our contractor notified the City of Glendale Utility Water and Power and the Crescent Valley Water District. We marked Water and Power, I mean, as Crescent Valley Water District, did not mark the location of that water line that they were supposed to have done. So when we excavated, we hit a line we didn't know was there. So writing, calling engineers stupid, corrupt, all that stuff, that is totally irresponsible. People should do their homework before they start writing garbage like that. That's the one thing. The other thing I'd like to state, because I've got calls on it, about our downtown development, about the boxes that we're building called apartments. I'm smart enough to know that we're now in a different era of construction, modernistic type of work, buildings, easier to build, buildings cheaper. I understand all of that. But I know when we created the downtown specific plan, we put incentives in. One of them was that when you build something in Glendale, you can get an incentive by building something that when other people look at it, they will know, hey, that's Glendale, California. Now, I'm wondering why so many of the buildings that are going in, apartment buildings, are all quite similar, all alike. My belief, and I understand, it's our design studio. Our design studio doesn't tell everybody what to do, but if you're a developer and you're trying to get approval of the city, you don't need a negative report coming to this council saying that. So, design studio likes the modern architecture, they give it to them, so there's no objection. We never get the objections. I fully believe that's true, and I fully believe the design studio in the planning, community planning department should quit doing it. I've said this more than one or two times. Developer has architects, they're good, let them design what they want to design. We don't need all similar architecture. I see much more variety of architecture in other cities, not as much here. Since I was born here, raised here, I'm going to die here, be buried here, I'd like to see a little more innovative architecture in the few apartment buildings that are going to be left to build in this city, because we're almost done with it. So I hope planning will take note. Stop trying to tell developers what they want. Let the developers do it. Let us be the judge, because we are the review architects of anything that's built downtown, not the design studio. Okay, I've spoken more than I usually speak, which is usually nothing, but I want to get it off my chest. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Yes, Ms. Friedman?
I have two comments tonight. The first actually is on a similar vein, which has to do with a letter to the editor that was in the Glendale news press. Someone who I don't know, named Fred Fox, who I'd like to meet someday, wrote an article, wrote a letter urging council to pass a resolution supporting SB 1272. I don't know where that is in the pipeline of legislation in Sacramento, but this is a proposed bill that would voice support to the federal government to change the Citizens United decision that the Supreme Court issued recently, that basically almost granted personhood to corporations when it comes to giving money in the political process. I would like to know if there's a second on the count. I would like to know if there's a second on the council for us. I've already got a second, that was fast. So, what I'm asking for is for us to look at, to talk about Glendale City Council passing a resolution in support of that legislation. Okay, my second topic is, about a week ago, several of us, almost all of us, went to a conference of the Independent Cities Association, which is the cities that have police or fire, basically in Los Angeles County and the surrounding areas, and there were a lot of really great sessions that we had, learning about different topics that municipalities are facing. And one of the topics was about e-cigarettes. And I learned a lot about e-cigarettes. I didn't know much about them, but I learned that they're not regulated, that they can contain pretty much anything, that they're not tested for safety by the FDA or anyone else, that they're permitted, most cities, just about anywhere, including schools, that many schools, high schools, allow students to smoke these products, that when they've been tested, they've been found to contain not only nicotine, but also arsenic and known carcinogenic poisons, and that they basically produce secondhand smoke, just like any other cigarette, because people exhale these fumes. So, I have a question first for our city attorney, I think it would be, are e-cigarettes covered under our clean air ordinance in the city?
Not at this time.
Okay, well, I would like to know if there's a second for us not introducing new legis, anything new, but to simply include e-cigarettes in our fresh air ordinance, so that they can't be smoked in playgrounds, outdoors, at bus stops, in places where people might come in contact with secondhand smoke.
I'll second that, but I'd like to add, I brought this up to staff months and months ago, I read up on all of that. And what City of Glendale was doing is waiting for the City of LA to take action, then staff would be coming forth with that for us to modify.
Well, from what I learned, there's no problem legally with us treating e-cigarettes the way that we treat tobacco. I don't really care to wait for City of Los Angeles to show us small cities the way. Oh, and I know that they're moving forward, I don't know that they've done it yet, I know that they're discussing it, but I would like to have us, it sounds like there's a second for us to discuss, including e-cigarettes in our fresh air ordinance to be regulated the same way that we regulate other tobacco products. And while we're at it, I'm very concerned that we have smoke shops that sell the so-called bath salts, and I don't know legally what we can do, but from what I have read, and I know many of us have heard, that these are very dangerous products, that again, are not tested for safety, not regulated, often used by teenagers, and they're being sold in our stores here in Glendale, one right next to the Americana in the Galleria. So, I would like to hear if there's anything that we can do, because anyone who's a parent should be concerned about this. And hopefully, anyone who's not a parent, who's an adult, doesn't take it, doesn't use those products. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman. Yes, Mr. Nagerian?
I'll limit my comments to one that I think is very important. Just this week, the Flintridge Sacred Heart Academy submitted their specific plan and draft EIR to the City of La Cañada, Flintridge. Why is this important to the residents of Glendale? It is very important. La Cañada, Flintridge Sacred Heart Academy sits at the very top of Chevy Chase, and up August, San Augustine.
St. Catherine.
San Augustine and St. Catherine, at the very top there. They have submitted plans for a massive expansion of that school, which will include and permit them to hold events of up to 500 people attending, serving alcohol, an unlimited number of times during the year. Imagine that, if you live on Chevy Chase Canyon, that up to five, six times a week, there can be revelers driving up your canyon to Sacred Heart Academy, going to their, whatever festival they want to have, wine and cheese, Feast of the Assumption, Shakespeare Festival, whatever it may be, drinking and driving back down Chevy Chase Canyon, a very, as you all know, a very dangerous, twisty, and treacherous roadway for everyone concerned, both the residents, drivers, and pedestrians. I want to make sure that the city planning department submits concerns, and I believe we discussed this earlier, and requested that we submit our concerns, on behalf of the residents of the City of Glendale, in particular, those along the route for the revelers, and not to omit the hauling route, the route where they're going to haul, I've heard estimates of several thousand truckloads of dirt, enough dirt to cover the Rose Bowl ten feet high, down Chevy Chase Canyon to access the freeways. This is a very serious issue, and just because it falls outside the borders of Glendale, doesn't mean we have to sit and sit idly by. So, please, city attorney, planning staff, let's make these comments, and preserve our right, and represent, and defend the residents of Glendale in this proposal.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nagerian. Ms. Devine?
Yes, thank you. I would just like to congratulate our Parks Department, Director Jess Duran and Oneig Balanikian, for a very successful cruise night, there were thousands of people there, it was a great event, a lot of vendors and thousands of people, and I see Dan Wells is back there, thank you for your help in that accomplishment as well, so it was a huge success. And the other thing I'd like to mention is that I recently went to the twentieth anniversary of the vision of a former planner here in Glendale, Marlene Roth, and she joined forces with Seroptimist International, because she was a member of Glendale, and the City of Glendale, the city council, at that time, it was Mayor Carl Roggio, Eileen Given served on this council, Mary Ann Plumlee, Larry Zarian, and others, and they took ten years to build the Gardens, which is a senior affordable housing unit on Louise, and they celebrated their twentieth anniversary just last week, and they, twenty years, and they still have a waiting list of three hundred. So, I just want to say congratulations to them, and I was very proud of that city council having, having done that, so those are my announcements, thank you.
Thank you. And I will also join you in expressing my thanks to our staff for putting together a great cruise night, probably the biggest one yet. I was there last year, and I, I, I believe there are more people there this year, and certainly, many more vendors, you know, booths, passing out information about their organizations, and it was just a great event, and I think a good time was had by everyone, not to mention the fantastic cars that were being exhibited.
The fireworks.
I couldn't stay for the fireworks, but the fireworks also, a nice addition to, otherwise also a great event. Also, last week, on the seventeenth, I, joined by Councilmember Devine, attended the kickoff event for the Special Olympics World Games 2015, Los Angeles, at the Americana, it was a very nice event, great cause, I think we're very proud, I can say that on behalf of the council, since we all voted for it, and Councilmember, Member Devine's presence expresses her vote for it, she didn't get to vote, but we're very proud to be part of those games, we look forward to our participation, however, it will manifest itself, and it will manifest itself in terms of providing the facilities for these athletes to train, and later on to be housed in Glendale, and I'm not sure about this, but maybe even to compete, we'll find out. But, it's, again, great games, sixty-five hundred athletes from all over the world, and the games are being hosted by not just Los Angeles, the games are called 2015 LA, but in reality, all the way from San Diego to San Luis Obispo. So, I think it's a great thing we're being a part of, and we should be very proud. And those are my last comments. Next item, yes, Mr. Dunn, you have an announcement?
Yeah, I'd have, I'd like to take a few minutes.
Please.
After careful consideration, thought, and advice, I've made it a difficult decision, and have accepted a position with the City of Costa Mesa as Deputy City Clerk. My last council meeting will be next week, the twenty-ninth. Thirteen years ago, as I was completing my second year of college, and needed to pursue full-time employment, a friend suggested that I work for a city, to which I applied, what would I do? Little did I know that would be one of the best decisions I've made. I started off as a customer service rep, and worked my way up to secretary to the city clerk. I've had a rewarding career with so many amazing people here in the city, I've had the privilege to assist several councils, build great relationships with the executive team, management, many city employees, and particularly, the community of Glendale. I have immense gratitude to everybody who helped me get here, and will miss many people, especially the ones with whom I interact daily. It's been an honor serving, and I thank the City of Glendale, the council members, public, for allowing me to have the honor to serve the past thirteen years.
Thank you, Michael, and you'll be missed.
I wish you weren't going. You do a great job, I will miss you. Always a smile, always so efficient, it's going to be a real loss.
And best of luck in Costa Mesa, and everything else that you do in life. Thank you. So, on to the next item, please.
Item six is community event announcements, this is the three-minute portion.
And we have some speakers, Chang Li, followed by Leon Mayer. Please state your name.
Good evening, my name is Chang Li, I'm with the Korea Glendale Assistant City Association, mayor, councilmembers, and the city staff. In 2012, City of Glendale proclaimed July 30th as the Comfortful Monday, and since then, we had many stories associated with that. Last year, we were able to erect the Peace Monument in the Central Park, and we, since then, also had some exciting moments with the statue. This council stood strongly to support the monument and the Comfortful Monday, so Korea Glendale Assistant City Association, in appreciation to the city and the council, is hosting this event. This actually do the right thing, the theme, this actually came from former councilmember Frank Terrell, to make the history correct and to do the right thing, so we used his comment. And this third commemoration of Comfortful Monday event is being, there's a series of events that's being, that's being held. On the eighteenth, last Friday, we opened the exhibit, art exhibit, which was actually displayed in France, Paris, France, of the cartoon artwork, very famous cartoon artwork, that's, that's being exhibited in the library right now, along with other artists, there are twelve artists, and forty-two items that's being displayed until August 2nd. This coming Sunday, in Alex Theater, will have a commemoration event, which is joined by Congressman Ed Royce, Congressman Michael Honda, Congressman Julie Chu, and BOE member Michelle Parkstil. And they'll be there in the, in the, at the event, and hopefully, all of you could be there as well. And I'm inviting all the citizens of Glendale to come. I think Alex Theater only has fourteen sitting, so you have, it's a first come, first served, but we invite you to come and enjoy the cultural performances that's being put on by Seoul Metropolitan Theatrical Company, forty of them are coming here to do this, and also, from our friendly city, Suncheon City, there's an Agra dance team that's coming, joined by the Park Trio, which is an ensemble. So, it'll be, it's a very cultural, art-rich type of event, that's happening on Sundays, starts at seven o'clock at Alex Theater. And also, on Tuesday, the theatrical company, there's a full version, on Sunday, it's a shorter version, but on Tuesday, there's a full version, which has the English subtitles, so even though you don't understand Korean, you can come and understand the play. It's a play about the Comfortful Monday, and the historical event, but it is put into a play where everybody can understand and learn. So, I invite everyone to come on Sunday event and Tuesday event. Now, on Monday, also, there's a performance, there's a dance, dance performance, there's an artist that was going to perform for five hours by the statue, peace statue, and then there's, there will be a lunch served, bibimbap, which is a very famous dish of Korean, that will be served at the park at noon, so I invite everybody to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Li. Yes.
Mr. Li, Chang Li, what time does the Tuesday event start?
Yeah, Tuesday event starts at seven-thirty, that's the full play, and the Sunday event starts at seven o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I encourage everyone to go and see the art exhibit at the library, it's quite wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leon Mayer, followed by Melinda Clark.
Good evening, Mayor Sinania, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Glendale Grand Center Library, the library itself, and the Association of Brand Library and Arts Center, on behalf of Arlene Bedore, to invite everybody to a documentary film showing on August fourteenth, two thousand fourteen, at this Grand Central Library, Glendale Central Library, seven o'clock, parking is validated. Now, I expect to go up on the screen, a picture of Citizen Tanui. Citizen Tanui was a Japanese-American who joined the 442nd Regimental... I got to get this straight. 442nd Regimental Combat Team, an almost all-Japanese combat team in World War II, this was not long after Pearl Harbor, and was during the time that the American Army finished our business in North Africa, and went to Italy as a feint for the coming Normandy invasion. So, the Japanese 442nd became known as the go-for-broke unit of the army, and Sergeant Tatunui was high up with that unit. And what he did, as they advanced north of Rome, in the Arno River Valley, and where there was fierce German resistance, he literally wiped out two German machine gun nests by himself. He was wounded, but there was still work to be done, and a few days later, as they continued to advance, they were cleaning, cleaning out a field where there were landmines, and he was number one, he was ahead, and he had an accident trying to remove a landmine, and it killed him. And that's the story of Citizen Tanui. Now, he went to Torrance, if I can have a couple of minutes, I'll finish it.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Still have time.
Tatunui graduated from Torrance High School before Pearl Harbor. When Pearl Harbor occurred, he enlisted within two months of Pearl Harbor, and that's when he went for training and joined what was the 442nd Combat Unit, which is one of the most decorated units in World War One, World War II history. And after he joined the army, the proclamation, the order was signed by FDR, for all the Japanese-Americans living on the West Coast, they put in internment camps. And so, here, here he, sorry, here he wasn't in the term, he wasn't in the term camp, the family was there, and he was in Italy, doing what he did to earn the Congressional Medal Honor awarded later on by Clinton, although he had other honors that were given to him. So, that's what the film is about, and it's about how, how, how the United States reacted positively when they saw what was being done by Japanese-American, and by the black Tuskegee aviators, and incidentally, we had the daughter of one of the Tuskegee aviators at, at our libraries a couple of years ago. And so, a group of Torrance High School students with a local documentary film writer... And so, a group of Torrance High School students with a local documentary film writer by the name of Robert Horstman, and with the music being done by James Taylor of Disney Imagineering, who, he lives in Eagle Rock. So we have a local film made here, and if you know me, I'm not gonna let something like that leave Glendale before we show it to the public of Glendale. And I could go on and on and on.
Let's not, no.
I'm not gonna do so.
Time's up.
But my time, thank you for the extra time.
So, okay, absolutely.
And we'll see you.
Thursday, August fourteenth, at seven PM, at the Central Library.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I have a few flyers left that I already gave out, so wait, raise your hand as I leave if you still want one, and go to the library to get a flyer if you have, if you're in the audience, the live audience at home. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And next is Melinda Clark.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Melinda Clark from the Executive Director of the Montrose Food and City Chamber of Commerce. And first of all, just real quick, I wanna say thank you for all that you've done to help us improve Montrose in the last year with the street improvements and the signage and what you're doing at the intersection. We're very thankful for that, and when we had the incident up there, I did call Tom Lorenz, and he quickly made sure that we would be open, that the street would be open for Fourth of July, so we just appreciate remembering Montrose. And that's what I'm coming here to do, is to invite you to the beautiful city of Montrose for our first annual Montrose Food and Brew Fest, which is a microbrew beer tasting event. It's gonna be a Beer Garden event on the twenty-two-hundred block, and we've also gonna have food. I guess normally at these events, you don't taste food with your beer, but we're gonna have tastings from most of the restaurants in Montrose, so your ticket will buy you entry into that, and we'll have music, and it's gonna be a lot of fun. We're also, it's also a fundraiser for the Glendale Police Department Explorer Program. We're giving money to the Chrysanthemum Valley Sheriff's Station, and we're giving money to the Chrysanthemum, I'm sorry, to the Glendale Fire Department Fire Association. So that's one of the big things, we wanted to be support, so it's gonna be a great event. People that don't normally know about Montrose or don't normally come to Montrose, hopefully will be coming to an event like this, so we're bringing people from outside the area. So we just encourage everybody to come, hopefully enjoy themselves up in Montrose. It's gonna be a beautiful day. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just another comment. Talked to Tom Lorenz about getting it on Channel Six website, and do you have any of those brochures here, or can you bring some?
I can bring you some.
What's the cost? You say it's a fundraiser.
The cost for the ticket, it's unlimited, just so you know, it's, we're gonna have thirty breweries there, so it's unlimited sampling, unlimited sampling of the food until it runs out.
Cost?
Their local, the, the ticket is for four hours, it's fifty dollars for a ticket. There's a designated driver ticket, which is thirty dollars for food only, encouraging that. And then if you wanna come in an hour earlier, it's sixty dollars. And the event runs from one, noon to four. Noon gets you in early, and one o'clock gets you in for the rest of the event. But I will bring some flyers.
See Tom in the back there.
See Tom. Okay, I'll give them to Tom. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the community event announcements. What's next?
At seven A, adoption of ordinance, ordinances. At seven A is ordinance amending certain properties on Fernando Court and Cypress Street in connection with general plan amendment and amending the zoning map in relation thereto. This was introduced by Councilmember Weaver on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen.
Thank you.
Seven A.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Next item?
At seven B is ordinance amending sections of Title Four of the Glendale Municipal Code related to transferring the city clerk transient occupancy tax collection duties to the Administrative Services Finance Department. This was introduced by Councilmember Weaver on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen.
Move seven B.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Next item?
At eight is action items. Eight A, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding Grandview Substation Project. At eight A, one is a resolution rejecting all proposals, dispensing with competitive bidding, and authorizing negotiation directly with Beta Engineering LLC toward a contract for the partial demolition and reconstruction of Grandview Substation.
Okay. Who do we have from?
We will have Chief Assistant General Manager Ramona Boig give you a brief presentation as this is an item that the council is very familiar with, really the, the keystone project of last year's rate plan and capital improvement program. So with that, Ramon, give us a brief presentation.
Yeah, good evening. Ramona Boig, Chief Assistant General Manager for GWP, and tonight, I'll just briefly give you a background of what the project is and what the benefits are. And just a short background, this substation was built in the nineteen thirties, and it's very important in the vitality of the San Fernando Corridor and the northwest part of Glendale. And as Mr. Achow stated, this will be a great use for the bond money that we use up for the electric bonds. And the scope is really to increase the capacity of the substation, to make it bigger so that we can serve more loads using the substation, and also increasing the voltage from thirty-four-five KB, the lower voltage we use for transmission, to sixty-nine thousand volts. And these are the direct benefits, short and sweet, again, greater capacity, similar footprint, similar to the Montrose project, and I'm sorry, the Glorieta project that we completed recently. It, it's going to support the existing substation in the area, and, and it would also modernize the substation. So with all the cybersecurity, fiscal security that you've been hearing about, we will meet all the new standards required by NERC and for reliability. The lower system losses will help us with our costs. The higher voltage means lower losses, and again, it modernizes and makes the facility more secure. And just to give you an idea of what this looks like right now, this is what the existing substation looks like. And in one of the proposals that we received, the, the whole idea, again, is to modernize, improve security, so we're gonna be hiding the substation using the, what we call the GIS, or Gas Insulated Substation, and this is what we think it's going to look like. I mean, this is still subject to approval by, by the city and the community. And that's the front part, and the rear part is what you're going to see from the railroad tracks. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Picture's worth a thousand words, huh?
I have a question. So what do you, to what do you attribute this discrepancy in the bid price? I mean, the, even the lowest bid price is three million dollars more than the one offered by the original engineer. And when I say three million dollars, percentage-wise, it's like twenty percent less.
That's correct. What happened was, when we originally bid the project back in two thousand and eleven, we suspended all projects because of the issue that we had with our financial situation. We suspended it and we rebid it, but in the process of rebidding, we did not update our engineers' estimate, the price of materials, labor, they have all increased at that point.
So if it's possible that this engineer with whom you'll be negotiating directly may come back with twenty million dollar bid price, it should be higher than any one of the entities that participate in the.
I don't believe so.
Yeah, let me, let me, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's not at all what we anticipate. We anticipate the number is going to be lower. I think in addition to the fact that, that our estimate was a little outdated, I think we were a bit aggressive in, in the build-out for that particular facility, and for future considerations, I think we, we were a little over the top, to be quite honest with you. I think there's also some materials in there that we have alternatives that we can use. We are anticipating that the price will come down. I don't believe, and I don't wanna lie to you, that we'll get it down to fourteen or fifteen million, but it, we expect it to be significantly less than what you see today.
Okay. So it'll be significantly less than the seventeen point, seventeen and a half million dollars.
That is certainly what we, certainly what we are shooting for, yes.
What if it doesn't? What will happen with this?
Well, then, we'll have to come back, and as a staff, we're gonna sit down and decide, is this the right way to go?
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we do that.
Do we, maybe we split it and go design separate from build? Or do we, we go back and rebid the whole project with, with revised specifications? However, we think this is a good company. We think they have a firm grasp of the scope of work, and I think that we can come to a mutual agreement on, on a good project and a good price.
Then, Mr. Mayor, usually a design-build comes in lower, right?
That's correct.
Sure, but I'm, I, you know, you can't exclude the possibility that they may come back with a higher price. I just wanna have the security of knowing that if they, their bid is higher than the lowest bid here, then it comes back to the council.
Absolutely.
You would end up, yeah, I think you'd end up value-engineering the project, either bring down the project overall or come back to the council and say that, no, we need, we need the maximum capacity that was included in this particular bid and something else in that capital plan that we have brought to you as part of the overall bond sale. One of those projects either have to be reduced or dropped off, because Grandview, as I say, really is the keystone of this round of improvement. This project needs to get down. Now, as Ramon had indicated, the spec that was put out, does all of that work need to get done? Do we need that degree of capacity? If not, we can easily bring that number down, but that's the beauty of a design-build contract. We'll be negotiating with the builder who is being, with the designer who ultimately will build.
And, and Mr. Mayor, just to reiterate, we're only asking you tonight for, for your approval to negotiate, not to enter into an agreement and anything final. So that negotiation, if successful or not, comes back to you.
Comes back to us. Very well. Thank you. Can we have a?
Move eight A one.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Next item?
At nine A, hearing, is a hearing, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding ordinance amending chapters thirteen point zero four, thirteen point zero eight, thirteen point one two, thirteen point one six, and thirteen point two of the Glendale Municipal Code nineteen ninety-five relating to GWP water rates and charges, resolution establishing water rates for GWP customers, and resolution authorizing the calculation and issuance of refunds for fire line overcharges. At nine A one is ordinance for introduction. Nine A two is resolution establishing water rates for GWP customers, and nine A three is resolution authorizing the calculation and issuance of fire line overages.
Now, nine B is related to this. Should we take this?
We will be presenting those really in tandem, sir.
Yeah, please, let's, let's do that. Why don't you read that into the record?
Okay, and nine B is, nine B is supplemental report to nine A relating to GWP water rates and charges. Nine B one is resolution establishing water rates for GWP customers and delaying the imposition of any applicable drought rate for a period of six months from the effective date of said new water rates.
Thank you. Mr. Achow?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We have a bit of information to get through, so we will endeavor to present it in tandem format, primarily with Mr. Zern, but also with our consultant team as well. Just by way of background, and then I'll step back and allow Mr. Zern to move forward. In eleven twelve, fiscal year eleven twelve, GWP found itself in very dire fiscal straits. There had not been a rate increase, and the capital structure for a considerable amount of capital improvement had not been executed pursuant to the original plan vis-à-vis bond and debt issuance. What ended up happening was that the utility was losing money that it otherwise would have realized by way of the original program and the generation of new revenues via rates, and then the preservation of a reserve, a healthy reserve, vis-à-vis the issuance of debt. At that point, as luck would have it, I arrived here in the fine organization of Glendale, and within a matter of weeks, it was advised that we were undertaking a water rate increase, multi-year water rate plan. As we looked at the, the structure, not just the rate increase, but also the restructure of that plan, it dawned on me that we really had not done nearly enough in the way of outreach. And I think the lesson learned, where maybe we patted ourselves on the back and we were perhaps too quick to pat ourselves on the back, that the lesson learned was that we have to go out to the community and talk about these things, and indeed, the action that I requested the council, that the council granted, was that we delay the rate increase at least for a period of a couple of months, that we could work specifically with businesses, because the fire line charges as part of this rate plan were going up dramatically. What we did not do, what no one did at that point, despite a considerable amount of interaction with the consultant team by the public and certainly by our staff, was to really look under the, the hood, such as it were, of, of the rate restructure. I think folks did not anticipate that a firm such as the one that we had as a consultant could so head-slappingly get it wrong with respect to the calculation of, of using bimonthly data for, for the monthly rate tiers that would ultimately animate the rate structure.
How wrong did they get it?
They got it extraordinarily wrong, to the tune of us undercharging, undercollecting in those rates of about eight million dollars plus. Conversely, we, we severely overcharged on the fire lines. The undercounting of the, the universe of fire lines, fire line customers, the data that went into that charge, all was there within the black box that was submitted by the consultant and was fundamentally wrong. Within a period of time, within a period of, of about a year, we began to understand and notice that revenue was coming in, and it was, it was more than what we had before, but it wasn't coming in the way that we thought and that way that was modeled to be coming in. We were receiving much more on the fire lines, not enough on the tiered structure, but we were selling more units of water, so the revenue was indeed coming in. After a period of time with our, our in-house staff and consultants digging in and looking around, trying to compare and analyze trends, it became apparent to us that the rate structure itself was fundamentally flawed. We had brought that to the attention of the former consultant. The consultant asked for a period of time to analyze our findings, and after a period of months, a couple of months, came to the same conclusion that, yes, it was fundamentally flawed. Then the, the question became, well, what do you do about it? And therein lies the disagreement that we have with that former consultant. Now, we have brought on a new consultant, that Mr. Zern will tell you, about to redo what is called the COSA, the Cost of Service Analysis. We originally believed that we could somehow salvage the original COSA, but the more we got into it, the more fundamental its flaws became apparent to us, and so we just ultimately threw out the Cost of Service Analysis and brought in, and decided to, to start the, the process entirely all over, trying to, to at least look at the, if we couldn't look at the rate structure, at least the rate plan, that had, the multi-year rate plan that had been increased, and try to work through that with a new rate plan before you. The good news is, as I said earlier, the lesson learned was that we were going to be going to the community, doing community meetings, going on TV, going into the media, especially now with the advent of social media, and I think the result is very good, that we were able to reach out to an unprecedented number of Glendale Water and Power customers and our overall residents. I think that'll be apparent in the results that you see tonight and the recommendation that we're able to present to you. But in no uncertain terms, let me tell you that the quality assurance and the quality control from our previous consultant was severely lacking, and it was lacking outside of the house with the consultant and inside the house, and I think what you see in terms of the complete turnover in executive leadership at GWP is a function of the recognition of the shortcomings of that QA QC process. What you will hear tonight is that we learned more lessons than just the outreach and the sincere and empathetic desire to work with the challenges faced by our customers, to understand that they have an expectation for quality and expertise, and I believe with our internal quality control team, with our external quality control team, new consultant, new legal counsel, looking at this alongside of our city attorney's office, that we have brought to you the best rate plan that we possibly can. No doubt, you'll hear from folks that will argue issues of policy, and perhaps they may be characterized as issues of law, but in fact, they're matters of policy and fairness, and you are elected to make policy, and we are recommending policies to you. The last part that I want to mention before I kick this over to Mr. Zern is this function of drought rates. As was read into the record, we have, as you know, been directed by the State Water Board to move towards our second phase of drought programming, including the, the institution of our drought rates. I think when you look at what the types of restrictions that have been put in place by the Water Board, I think that there are a number of things at play, not the least of which is the supply of water. As we went out to the public to talk about issues regarding the rate plan, really, people weren't too, didn't seem too concerned about the rates themselves. I think understanding that they really hadn't seen too much of an increase since two thousand and twelve was at the forefront of their mind. Instead, it was the. it was the discussion of water security and the quantities of stored water in the MWD system that feeds us, and certainly the impact of development. But interestingly, somewhat surprisingly, not the plan itself, and so we've been able to look at that as well. Suffice to say that the drought rates and the reflection of the drought rates, in my opinion, are as much a function of the water politics that impact the state and have for its entire history, and they are playing out now, whether it's the Bay Delta Conservation Project, the amount of the water bond that's being negotiated with the governor and the legislature, the plight of the Central Valley farmers versus the environmental concerns, the ecosystem concerns that take place in the Bay Delta. All of these things are coming to play that are having an impact on the decision to move towards, I believe, move towards the second phase of water conservation. And with that, our recommendation to you is that we suspend the increase in those water rates for at least six months until much of this becomes more clear in terms of what the water bond is going to be and the political football that it has been, what the ultimate disposition is there going to be, and some of the other factors that are impacting water policy in the state of California. I think that's a prudent way for you to go. We can always increase and adjust those rates as we go forward. Certainly, we are instituting on an education, an outreach basis, all of the mandates put forth by the water board. We don't think that that is politicking in the least. It makes sense to restrict, to make some of the restrictions and enforce those with a gentle hand as been brought forth by the water board. But to be very clear, we are recommending that we suspend the rate increase on those drought rates. All that as a preamble to say, we want to present to you tonight the new COSA, what the new rate plan predicated on that COSA does to our customers, the impact it will have, the impact relative to other water agencies, and answer some of the questions that we have received from the community to give you assurance that what we are recommending and what ultimately we will ask you to decide is both prudent, it's reasonable, it's lawful, and fully within the confines of good water policy and environmental policy. This is a public hearing, so if you'd like to open that public hearing, I will kick it over to Mr. Zern, sir.
I'd like to open the public hearing at this point, yes.
Can I ask a quick question? It's a little bit off-topic, but I've been getting questions. Are we now in the next phase of our water conservation plan, so we now have the restricted watering days in effect? Have we moved to all of that?
Ms. Friedman, next week, we'll be coming forward to you with a recommendation that we do move into Phase Two.
Okay, so next week, we vote?
Right. Yeah. Council has to approve moving into each of the phases.
So I just want that out there to the public, that if your timers are set to water seven days a week, hopefully they're not, next week is the time to change them three days a week?
Three.
And we'll talk about which days, Tuesday, Thursday?
About which days and how much time and that type of thing, yes. Plus, any other restrictions associated with that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say one thing, Mr. Ochoa, to you and your staff. The community outreach you've done, which was extensive, apparently was very successful, at least for me, I have not received one letter, one, not one letter, one email, no phone calls, no messages, no nothing from the thousands and thousands of people in this city, which tells me they understand what you're doing, and you got the word out very well. Of course, there's always some people that won't agree with it, but that's, that's just the nature of the beast.
I can, thank you, sir. I can tell you that we've received, I believe, 31 protests out of 34,000?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one?
We've received 32 protests out of 44,000.
Out of 44,000, I'm sorry. And if you're wondering, in 2012, I think we received 112 protests?
Yes.
With that, sir, I will turn it over to Mr. Zern.
Out of 44,000, eh?
Out of 44,000, yes, sir.
Mr. Zern?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to essentially pick up from where we left you in May when we came to you with the Proposition 218, I will say kickoff in initiating that particular process. So in that particular process, we had, the proposed rate that was posted in the notice was a four-year rate with 5% the first year, effective September 1st, and 4% for the next three consecutive years. Keeping in mind, that 5% is essentially the last year of the rate increase that was approved back in 2012, or began in 2012 and then approved actually in 2011. So that last year, that last 5% was set to go into effect on January 1st of 2015. The only difference here is we're asking that that be moved up to September 1st, 2014. And then subsequently, we're adding the three years, 4% each year will be effective July 1st over the course of that three-year period. The compounded increases for classes are different. You'll see, you know, the glaring first three right there, where you have minus 65% for fireline. That's the reduction that occurred. That's how, and we'll get into a little bit more detail on how grossly overstated that was. And then it's a 29.6% increase for single-family, 35.1% for multifamily. Those are the two categories, and you're going to see that a little bit later, that underpaid in relation to the previous rate scenario that was approved. 23.7% for commercial and then 16.8% for irrigation. That's a question, we showed that slide because that's a question that comes up often when we're talking to the public, is what's that compounded rate? It's easy to say it's 5% this year, but what's that mean to me and in my category over the course of the entire rate structure? With the proposed revenue increases, GWP's water bills still compare favorably with our neighbors. Burbank just approved a 4.75% increase, CVWD, Crescent Valley Water District, 5.8%, and LA has not approved but is proposing a double five, two, two straight years of 5% for their water rates. What's that look like for us? Here's a typical single-family, we call this, and you'll see that we are in the middle here, the burnt orange line. You'll see the darker color is where we're at now, and then we have the proposed rates for all of the different agencies. So even with our proposed rate increase, we're still sitting right in that position, a little more than Pasadena and Burbank, a little less than City of LA and Crescent Valley Water District. And by the way, we've polled all of our neighbors, Pasadena has not indicated one way or the other where they're going to do anything with their water, so we're not sure if in fact that's going to happen. Of course, we don't want to show that if it doesn't. Here's a typical multifamily dwelling, and you can see we're even more favorable here. We remain in that second to the lowest category of these five, even with the proposed increase, we remain in that position. That's even with Pasadena not raising their rates, or at least indicating they aren't raising their rates at this time. Reasons for the proposed rate adjustments, I think Mr. Ochoa went over Will Dan's errors on this particular case. That resulted in particularly these two categories, single-family customers paying an average of $5.37 less per month than originally planned, and that's resulted in an under-collection of $2.4 million. So in some cases, and I'll tell you, we have exact comparisons, we've got households that are paying less today with three rate increases than they were before we started the first rate increase. That's how off this whole COSA was. Multifamily, even greater situation there, paying an average of $44 less per month, excuse me, and we're undercollecting to the tune of about $6.2 million, and that's where you get that, that just a bit over $8 million that Mr. Ochoa indicated. Bill impacts due to errors, and again, you see the green is what actual is for this, again, typical single-family, with the other, with the orange color being what it should have been under the COSA that was previously developed. And then we have in the blues, that proposed fifth or fourth year 5% increase, and that we will have straightened out, so we've shown that what it will actually be. And again, the typical multifamily, you see even greater. Take a look at that far-left bar. That's what the average was for this category before we raised any rates. And look how it successfully, successfully went down over, over the course of those three years when we raised it to 2% and 4%. So even with that, that fourth year 5% increase, you see the far-right blue bar. They're still paying just a touch more than they were before any rate increases went into effect. This is really where the majority of our under-collection occurred, this particular class. Reasons for the proposed revenue adjustments, again, the rate design did not collect projected revenues, especially at tiers three, four, and five for single-family, multifamily at tiers two and three, and then the third glaring issue, again, that Mr. Ochoa covered, and that was the over-collection and the overcharge of the fireline customers to the tune of about $3.4 million. And that was continuing up until January, this past January, when administratively, we just halted it from going any further while we got our arms around this whole situation. But again, we were applying costs for the fireline charges, and here's a graphic, a bar graph example of that. The far-left green bar is where it was before we implemented the rate increases of 2012, 2011, 2012, and then you see it just begin to go, go up dramatically. Those blue boxes you see to the right, that's what it would be under our proposed rate scenario today. If you were to approve this tonight, that's what it would look like, significantly less. In fact, we can go back a second. If you look, even at the end of the four-year rate, proposed rate scenario, it's less than it was in 2010, 11. So, and a lot of questions, why did this happen? We spread the costs erroneously. The costs were spread for all of the fireline charges over about 300 customers, when in fact, we had probably closer to 1,100 customers. And that's in and of itself what happened. We went out and tracked down every fireline customer we could, all the way to boots on the ground, trenching, digging holes just to make sure we could confirm, and our numbers just a touch over 1,100. So you can imagine by just simply spreading the costs over the greater number, the accurate number, and this is the result of that. Proposed changes that go along with this, we want to obviously the new COSA and fix the structure. So correctly apply the monthly data to design, to the design of the tiered rates, reduce the number of tiers. So we're proposing that we go from five tiers to four in single-family and from three to two in multifamily. I just think that many tiers, all of us collectively felt that many tiers was too burdensome. The less amount of tiers gives you more flexibility as a user in between before you begin to jump up to the higher tier. We're going to adjust the meter ratio to use our GWP meter specifications versus standard specifications, and obviously, we want to correct the fireline calculations and adjust those rates. Converted monthly customer charge to daily customer charge, this simplifies pro-rata billing. So previously, if you came in, depending on where you came in as a customer, you may pay for the majority of the month instead of just paying for those days of the month that you're in. We would split the month, so this is a little bit better for those that are coming in, especially if they're only a few days in a month. Recycled water rate, we're the discount, and again, trying to keep it in line with the COSA and the whole concept of the equality in our classifications, we're proposing to lower that from a 25% discount to 15%. 15%, I will tell you, is still well above industry standard. Most other municipalities are offering about a 10% discount, so 15 still puts us above most. We simplified the water adjustment charge to, so the calculation only includes our MWD rates when those change and when energy charges go up. So when our electrical rates go up, and that's the cost of pumping, or when the MWD raises their rates, that would be the only time that we make an adjustment. And again, Mr. Ochoa touched on the drought rates, and we would tie those drought rates directly to Phases Two through Five, which are the mandatory phases, so that those would kick in automatically when council made that decision to move to one of the, one of the phases. There's been a lot of questions in what we, when we were talking to folks about what's the typical distribution. So we broke that down. So the typical distribution of water for a single-family home is about 66% irrigation and 34% for personal use. And this is based on information we got from a lot of sources, but the most reliable we found was the California Department of Water Resources. An average household of 2.8 people uses about 467, just a little under 500 gallons of water a day. And of that, 312 of it is for outdoor use, the remainder for indoor use. And this is, the next will be a pie chart that just kind of breaks that down. So you see the large chunk there being the irrigation, and then nothing more than 7% interior for any particular use, whether that's for wastewater, for showers, for your kitchen, whatever it may be. So the bulk of single-family comes in that irrigation category.
What about in people who live in apartments? How much water are they using on average?
We didn't, I didn't have a figure for that, but obviously, you take that irrigation out, and the personal usage is pretty consistent. You'll find that in any household, you can take that calculation of the census data and you'll use that 500 gallons. It'll, excuse me, probably be less than that 500 gallons, so of that, 132 is for personal use. So I think it's pretty, pretty safe if you took that number and said that would be in a dwelling that had no landscaping. These are some of the other revenue plans, and again, this is a chart we showed you back in May. That, that orange-colored one, the second column there is the proposed 5444. You may recall, that first column is what we, we came to you with. At the time, we wanted to talk about the 218 process, which was a five-year plan that had two, two first years of 5% with three subsequent years of 4%. Council's decision was we would move at least for the 218 process into the 5444. And we also showed you three other options that we had come up with. One was a four-year 5222, a four-year of 4% each year, and then a three-year of 543. And in that column, you see where that puts us in various categories. I'll have to go to my glasses here. So you see under the proposed five and three years of four, we meet the 218, we're 218 compliant, our debt service coverage is there, and that occurs under any of the scenarios in both those cases. Our Pago capital, as you recall, once our bond proceeds were expended, we wanted to be able to have enough money in the bank that we could continue our capital program, but with our own money, our own savings and not having to go out to bond unless it was a specific larger-type project. But our day-to-day, kind of year-to-year infrastructure repairs, we wanted to do a Pago, and we estimated that to be somewhere around the neighborhood of about $4.5 to $5 million a year. So you can see under the five with three, four years that we get that. Our net income begins to climb almost immediately, all the way up to that last year, we were $4.4 million. Cash reserves get us up to $6.1 million. Oh, excuse me. We, we end up at $6 million, starting with our negative 6.1 in the hole that we're in now, and we start to slowly dig our way out of that hole and get to a positive 6.0, which is very, that's a good, that's a good number. It's a number I'm comfortable with, and I can assure you, we are comfortable with. It's less than what the council-approved reserve number is, which is, which is $11 million, but I think it's something that is certainly much better than where we are today and something that we can work with, definitely work with. Under the other scenarios, you just see to the lesser extent, under the five with three years of 2%, subsequently going into effect, that we still maintain our Pago. You see our net income does slowly increase, not, certainly not to the rate that it would under the other scenario. And while we do climb out of our current situation in regards to reserves, we don't quite get all the way there. We're still a little bit in the hole. The four years of 4% increases, again, you see those different scenarios. We meet our Pago, good, positive net income, and we do get up to about a $4.5 million reserve at the end of that, that process. And then with the three-year process, you see to a lesser extent, although we do get positive cash flow in each of those years, and we do get a positive reserve balance at the end of the third-year increase. This is a little bit busy, but it just essentially takes that five and three, three years of 4% and line graphs it out. That red line across the top is the cash reserve policy that we have now. You'll recall, we had this discussion with the electric policy as well. It's a council policy, it can change. Again, I will reiterate that anything that gets us into a positive mode, I'm pretty happy with considering where we're at now and where we've been. Mr. Ochoa mentioned the internal quality assurance and quality control we did in relation to what was done in the past. GWP and the city, this was a city effort. We assembled a team that worked from, from day one of retaining Bartolom Wells, our consultant who did our COSA study. They were involved in this every step of the way. So we had water management staff, we had finance department staff. And when I say finance department, we're talking, Mr. Elliott was intimately involved in this. We had the audit department, Ms. Flynn was intimately involved in this. We had our, our internal IS, we had our internal customer service. The city attorney's office was very involved in this. And then we had, even in the case of Mr. Colontano, we had outside legal assistance as we went through this, and all of our information services issues that we needed to vet out as well, and how that would all work out was, was. as well, and how that would all work out was done. As far as the GWP commission, we held a meeting on June 30. We presented essentially this very same presentation to them with all of the options. The commission adopted a motion recommending that the city council adopt the ordinance of the 5% with three subsequent years of 4% with a four-year plan. Community outreach efforts, again, Mr. Ochoa touched on this. This was something, I think, it wasn't just for this water rate discussion. We implemented this as part of the electric rates as well, as you recall, and that was just getting out and touching as many people through as many different means as we could. We held four community meetings at various parts of the city. We had a total of 48 people attend. You'll see, there's the breakdown. We were up in Spar Heights where we had 18, down here in the central area, Police Community Room, Civic Edison, and the Boy Scouts of America. We mailed out, shortly after our meeting with you in May, we mailed out our Prop 218 notices, which all included everything that we talked about, the rate scenarios, the proposals, the reasons why, and the community meeting dates. We had another 3,000 flyers that went out to social groups, community groups, churches, again, that's the next bullet there, press releases, we had more than one. We used social media quite extensively. Obviously, that wasn't me, but we had somebody do a great job on social media. And we used our website and rate email, direct email. We actually set up on our GWP site a special water rate link that had all of the information, COSA information, frequently asked questions, and so forth. GTV6 we used extensively. We went into the newspapers, CV Weekly, GMP, Montrose Patch, Azberaz. Print advertising, local papers for the meetings especially, and then we posted our meetings on the online calendar. The last bullet there, it probably should have had that with the community meetings. We made a special presentation to the Chamber of Commerce. So we went and met with a number of the chamber members, showed them what we were proposing, talked to them about the different rates. And while I was not here, my understanding is they have supported us in our efforts on our proposed rate. Customer questions and issues, just to give you a flavor. In our community meetings and in our website, frequently asked questions, here's where the majority of the questions came from. And as you can see, and then just following in line with what Mr. Ochoa said, not a lot of questions about the rate increase itself and how that financially impacted people, but a lot about some of the other things that were involved, including the development and how, what impact that has on water, our transfer, and what the status of that was. If somebody's conserving water, how is a drought charge going to affect them? How are we dealing with will down and their mistake? Is conservation the reason rates will go up? So these are some of the questions that we heard quite a bit, or more often than others, from our community meetings and on our website. We also had a number of questions that related more specifically to the COSA and to the Proposition 218 process. So with that, first I'm going to ask Mr. Doug Dove from Bartle Wells to come up and go over this briefly to talk about that. We have answered these questions as best we can when we were asked. We've met with folks who are interested in talking about it, but I'll let Doug just briefly go over some of these and what he did and found and how he responded.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Doug Dove. I'm a principal with Bartle Wells Associates, and we prepared the cost of service analysis, or otherwise known as the COSA. We worked very closely with city staff and special counsel to develop a very robust rate structure that reflects the cost of service. We developed a rates structure that has four customer classes, and this rate structure was based on generally accepted ratemaking concepts and industry methodologies for setting rates. We also had legal counsel review our methodologies, and we believe these are very consistent with state constitution and also Proposition 218. So we developed customer classes, single-family, multifamily, commercial, and irrigation. And we also looked at each customer class, and we feel that they are accurately representative of different classes of customers. Los Angeles has three customer classes, Burbank has two customer classes, Pasadena has one customer class. We're recommending four here, which is what you have going forward from 2012. We also looked very carefully at the water consumption data, and we developed single-family tiers to encourage conservation and be consistent with Article 10 of the California Constitution to discourage waste, wasteful use of water. We also looked at public fire flow, and we find that that is a special benefit to water customers because the fire flow and the hydrant system is used by the fire department to suppress fires, property fires, and to protect buildings, which are owned by customers of the water system. We also are recommending a 15% discount on the recycled water rate to encourage conservation and folks to switch over to the recycled water system, and that's consistent with California Constitution, Article 10, to encourage conservation and discourage waste. So we want to maximize the use of recycled water. And so with that, we firmly believe this is a rate structure that is compliant with the California Constitution and Proposition 218, and is based on generally accepted ratemaking principles. And we have one of the leading experts in California on Proposition 218 here with us tonight, Mr. Michael Colentuno.
And Mr. Colentuno is sort of our, you talk about our QA QC procedure. This was really that last, you know, nail down getting this thing right. And Mr. Colentuno of Colentuno Highsmith &amp; Watley, as Mr. Dove said, is one of the preeminent experts in Proposition 218 and that law. So Michael was, has gone through it, and I'll let him talk about what his findings were.
Just a couple of comments to give the council some confidence that your staff really did look hard at this, as they needed to do. I have been practicing in this area before this was an area. I worked with the League of Cities in the unsuccessful effort to defeat Prop 218 back in 1996, and have been working on Proposition 218 cases since then. My firm has handled six cases in the California Supreme Court on this subject, and I have argued five of them. I am helping agencies make rates all over California and have for the last 20 years, and I defend rates and occasionally litigate them for plaintiff cities when that's necessary. So I have as much experience in this subject as any lawyer in California. The process that we undertook in my office to assist your team was to take the cost of service analysis and to subject it not only to my review, but to review by a lawyer in my office named Amy Sparrow, who Mr. Dove is very familiar with, because Amy has graduated from UCLA with a master, with an honors degree in math before she went to law school. She's that rare lawyer who is very comfortable with math, and very comfortable getting into 17, 18, 19 layers of tables and asking the logical question that comes from them. Part of the reason that the supplemental report reads the way that it does is because of the work that Amy and I did to help you build a robust record to respond to some of the criticisms that were levied. So we think we've done a pretty thorough work. I want to touch briefly on some of the concerns that your citizens and Mr. Zavos and others have raised, just to give you my sense of them. The very first thing I want to tell you is that ratemaking is discretionary legislative activity. You make policy choices here. There is more than one way, more than one correct water rate. There's no one right answer. To give you an example of that, there are communities, some as close by as Pasadena, that have a single water rate. There are communities that have flat water rates, X dollars and Y cents per unit of water, no matter how much you consume. The city of San Juan Capistrano gives everybody a water budget that is detailed to how many people live in your house and how much square footage of grass you've got. So your budget is going to be 17 and 1/2 HCF a month, and the guy next door is going to have less because he's got fewer kids. The water rates are very different from community to community because of the choices those communities make, even though your underlying costs to obtain water, to treat water, and to deliver water may be comparable. So this is legislative activity. You get to decide whether this is the right answer, and anybody who stands up here and tells you that there's only one right answer doesn't have it right. So let's talk about classes. You have a combined electric and water utility, and most of your customers take both services. Therefore, you can say for a particular address, a whole lot of things about it in terms of its water consumption and its electrical consumption. And you break your commercial customers into 15 separate electric classes because those different electric customers affect your cost of supply electricity differently. That does not mean that those classes of customers are meaningfully different for purposes of water rates. Yes, we can calculate their momentary peaking values in terms of water peak demand, but you could also calculate peaking factors for even-numbered addresses in the city as compared to odd-numbered addresses in the city. And if you did that, you would find they have a different number, because any set of data is going to produce slightly different numbers if you break it out differently. If we had the data, we could distinguish right-handed people from left-handed people, find out that right-handed people have a slightly lower peaking factor than left-handed people do. Would that be a sensible way to make water rates? Just because we can draw a correlation in our data doesn't mean it's meaningful. So your expert consultant has told you that all residential uses affect your water utility in roughly the same way, and that it makes sense to distinguish multifamily housing from single-family housing, because they have less greenscape, and they tend to have lower occupancy loads and therefore use less water. The four categories that you're using, single-family, multifamily, commercial, and industrial, are the four categories that are commonly used throughout California and throughout America. Sure, you could have 15 commercial classes if you wanted to, but you don't have to, and there's very good reasons not to. When we make rates, we have competing policies we're trying to address. Let me take just two. Simplicity, a very simple rate structure that is easy and cheap to administer and easy for your public to understand. That's a good thing. On the other hand, a very simple rate structure is not necessarily a very fair rate structure. So for instance, we said every household pays 100 bucks a month, that's the end of story. Then the family with 17 people sharing a big house pays the same amount as the single-family, the elder who's living alone and not using a lot of water. So you get simplicity at the price of fairness. So equity and administrability are competing values, and you have to strike a balance. Could you theoretically arrive at 44,000 different water rates for 44,000 different customers? If you want to rent a Cray supercomputer over in Arizona for a while, you probably could. Would that make good public policy? Probably not. I'll give you an example. Davis has more UCD, UCAL PhDs per capita than anywhere else in our state, and because of that, they have a citizens committee on water rates, which has a lot of very smart people with a lot of initials after their names on it, and they came up with a rate structure that said, you've got a fixed component and a variable component, you know, the flat amount you pay every month, and then the variable amount based on how much water you use. They're going to vary everybody's fixed amount based on how much water they used last year, so that your fixed amount gives you an incentive to conserve next year. Problem was, the public wouldn't accept it. It was confusing. It treated different people who looked to the public to be the same differently. And the voters in that community repealed that water rate because they did not like the complexity. So you're entitled to make choices for a simple, transparent, understandable, and cheap-to-administer system. Just a couple of comments, and then I'll get out of your way. The, there's something called the American Water Works Association M1 Manual, which is the standard reference for ratemaking procedures. The Court of Appeal has told us that using that process fulfills your obligations under Prop 218, and Mr. Dove and his colleague have used that process, and it's reflected in the report in front of you. With that, unless there are questions now, or perhaps after you've received public comment, I really just want to wrap it up by saying, we looked hard, you're well within the range of reason, the judgments you're being asked to make are legally defensible. Others may disagree, they're entitled to disagree, but ultimately, this is a decision for elected officials, and you're entitled to make it.
So, Mr. Mayor, just to wrap it up, just a summary of the recommendations that we're making, the proposed 5%, 4%, 4%, 4% over a four-year period. This will fund our capital programs from net income on the pay-go basis that I was talking to you about, so those, once the bond proceeds have been expended, which we anticipate would be three years, we'd have 9.7 million for the following two years. That will more than cover our ongoing capital needs. We'll produce a net income of 4.3 million in that final 17, 18 year. Our ending cash reserves will be positive, where they're very much negative now, as you know, and we'll be at about that $6 million level, again, below the $11.3 million required or council-mandated level. But again, I think it's something we're very, very comfortable with, and certainly in a lot better situation than we are today. And as I said before, the debt service is covered over the full four-year plan. That debt service is what we owe on the bonds, and that's more than covered. So again, that's the plan we're recommending. This is how it would roll out, September 1st, 5%, and then each of the three successive years, on July 1st, you'd get a 4% increase. Let me just add something that's not up here, because I know it's a question that came up, is how we are going to treat the overcharge on the fireline. And our proposal to do that at this point would be, we would make a refund to those folks. So those would be calculated and then refunded to each of the customers, not a credit to their bill, because in some particular cases, I will have to tell you that the charges were so much that nobody, you'd have to probably, it'd be 20 years before we'd pay them back on a credit basis. So in talking this over with Mr. Ochoa and Mr. Elliott, I think the best way for us to go on is just to refund those overcharges, have that be done with, and have the new charges in play. So with that, I'll open it up to...
So some businesses are going to get an early Christmas present.
Yes.
And on the flip side, and we've made this clear before, but to the residential customers who are undercharged, we have no plans to go back and try to collect that. We're eating that.
No, that's, it's absolutely true, Ms. Friedman.
I want to be very clear about that.
We don't have retroactive charges in this, where everything is positive and moving forward. That's what we want to do. We want to fix the COSA, first and foremost. We want to fix the COSA, put our rate structure in order, and as you've heard from our experts, we are well on our way to doing that. And then from there, we want to just start to look at chipping down on our negative balance, getting our positive cash flow income up, and being able to fund our capital programs. The simple essence of running a water business, nothing more, nothing less. You know, we're not looking to double, you know, even get up to what the council-mandated reserve level is. We just want to fix the structure that was, that's in air now, and we want to move forward.
A couple of questions. So why was the 5444 sort of the last thing on the screen before we go into discussing this?
I just wanted to reiterate, that's what the staff proposal is to you. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And so the base, the baseline upon which we'll be, we'll be commencing, whatever plan it is that we adopt, will be the 2010, 2011, whatever everyone was paying that time period, or?
No. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when we redid the COSA, as Mr. Ochoa indicated, we looked at the whole structure all over again. We didn't base it on a particular year in the past. We looked on what our needs were today, and what was legally defensible and what was right, and we moved forward on that. So we didn't base it on anything in the past.
So the question is, let's for one second, assume that we're adopting this plan. First year, 5% increase, right? It's 5% increase on what? On what years? What's the baseline? What's the beginning point?
The current year.
The current year.
Yes.
But what we have currently is a result of a faulty COSA, right? Is that right?
Effectively, yes.
Yes.
But we are not advocating, I see your question, we're not advocating going back to the 2010 number, which in some cases could be higher than where we are right now.
And that's my question.
Right.
Is the number today, and I know it's a complicated answer, I know that, because for some it's going to be higher, some it's going to be lower, but is the number today that people are paying higher than it was in 2010, 2011?
In some cases, it's much lower.
Right.
Than that. And that's the number we're using to project forward on. So it's actually the lower number we're projecting off of, because as you saw in the multifamily, what they were paying in 2010 was significantly higher than what they're paying today, and even what would be proposed when the final 5% went into play.
So going back, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So for single families also, right?
Correct. Not to the extent of multifamily, but certainly, single families have also been underpaying in comparison to what we had projected based on those 2010 rates.
And commercials are the other way around. They're...
Commercials are, yeah. We made some adjustments there, but they're probably right. And again, you can break that down, small commercials probably going to be paying a little less, large commercials probably going to pay a little bit more.
Right. I just want everyone to understand that although we're basing it on today's situation, it doesn't mean that there has actually been a growth over the last three years. It's not like they've been paying more, and now we're adding on another...
No, I think that's an excellent point, because in most cases, in many classifications, especially the majority, they've been paying less.
Less, okay. Those are the questions that I had. We do have speakers, and there are quite a few of them, so I'd like to ask everyone to keep their comments short, if it's possible, and if the statement, you know, the point has already been made, and there's no need... has already been made, and there's no need to be repetitive. I mean, just explain whether you're for it, against it, why, and so on and so forth. But I'm going to limit the comments to three minutes per person, and we'll start with Mark Venery, followed by Kenneth Landon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members and staff.
State your name, please.
My name is Mark Venery. I'm a resident of Glendale since 2003. My reason for coming here is really not to oppose anything, but really to provide an alternate viewpoint. I believe that the City Council has an obligation to be good stewards of everyone in the city's money. $50 saved today by any of our constituents is $50 to go ahead and put towards, you know, eating in a restaurant in Glendale, eating, going out and having a good time, rather than paying what all of us hate, which are taxes and fees that are, you know, associated with daily living. I believe the 444 proposed alternate, you know, whatever you call it, the different number that was put forth, but not promoted by the Glendale Water and Power, is a better one. It gets the city to solvency, it gets you to positive cash flow reserve dollars in 2017. It would put 1.3 million in, I guess, the reserves of the city, as opposed to 2.5 in 2017. It would, by 2019, would provide 4.4 million, as opposed to 6 million by 2019, I believe those are the numbers. I believe that as an obligation, we have to go ahead and try and not, go ahead and be equal to surrounding communities. I think we have to be better. I think if we looked at our presentation earlier, we can see that Burbank, a sister city that has to deal with the same obstacles, the same challenges of providing good, clean water to its constituents, does it better and does it for less. I think I see that their bills, on average, are anywhere from $10 to $20 for a single-family home, upwards to $50 or $60 less for multifamily homes. I don't understand the rationale, I'm not a, you know, a person who deals with numbers on a daily basis, but I can tell you, as a person who's having to pay the bill every month, it bothers me to know that we look to be competitive with our outlying communities rather than better. On June 19th, I went to the community outreach program that the Glendale Water and Power put forth as, you know, its way of getting the message out to the community. I'm grateful to Mr. Zern, he presented that night. At that meeting, I asked Mr. Zern, the way I read the information tonight is that it took a good nine months for GWP to figure out that there was the problem that Mr. Ochoa so eloquently put forth. What's going on with the City Council to go ahead and prevent another, you know, problem similar to the one we had then? It went through, I don't know how many layers, of Glendale Water and Power management to go ahead and put forth the report that was approved by the City Council. How can that be, that we now have to deal with a nine-month retrospective, you know, finding of a problem that was reactionary? I think we should be looking at the numbers. If I put forth a report with my boss, I can be sure that I'd get into trouble for putting forth a report that was absurdly wrong. And I would ask that the city go ahead and answer these kinds of questions. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Mr. Zern, I think there's a couple of questions that you may be able to address. Why is Burbank able to provide water at the cheaper rates?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, try as we may, we're having a very difficult time making an apples-to-apples comparison with the city of Burbank. To my knowledge, they have not done a COSA in their water rate. I believe that Mr. Calontano is involved now with a-
218 violation.
Well, he's, they're working now on a COSA study to look at that. So without that kind of detailed information, it's a little difficult for us. They have different adjustable charges than we do. I'm not saying that they're hiding anything by any means, but it's very difficult for us to do that comparison, and as we find with all of our rates, folks present them a little bit differently, so it is sometimes hard to make that comparison. So try, again, that's the first question I had when I saw these. Mr. Ochoa has asked that question. It's like, how do they sit where they are sitting? And it's just been difficult for us to try to make that comparison.
And before the 2011 rate increase, how, for how long a period of time had we had not had an increase in water rates?
I think 2008 was our last rate increase.
So in essence, we haven't had a rate increase since 2008?
Correct. And I have to be honest with you, Mr. Mayor, and I've said this, I said this in May when I talked to you, to the council. I think that kind of rate setting isn't the right way to do this, is to go for periods of time of not raising the rates, and then come back with large multi-year rates. I'd like to eventually see this, and of course, that's ultimately council's decision, where we get into a situation where we have rate increases, but they're just keeping us square with whatever it may be, the Consumer Price Index, the cost of water, the construction cost, and that we're doing, you know, 1.5, 2% kind of rate increases. And that's where I'd like to see us go, and not have to do like we did with electric and certainly what we're looking at with water right now. And again, the gentleman asked that question at the meeting about, you know, it took this long for us to find it? Yeah, it did. You know, we put our faith in a pretty, what we thought was a pretty well-known and well-qualified firm, and until we started to see the revenues come in and when we identified them, you know, that's when we knew something was wrong. And it took us all this time to go back and just deconstruct what had happened, and then have to reconstruct and rebuild the COSA. And again, you know, to the extent that our city attorney's office is taking that issue up, and if the city is successful in any way, that will be applied back to the Water Department, and we'll make that adjustment as we can with the rates, so.
Thank you, Mr. Zern. Kenneth Landon, followed by Aram Kazazian. Please state your name for the record, three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and staff. Kenneth Landon. Steve Zern commented after the lawsuit against Wildom that you didn't have the expertise to identify the flaws, but this is even after former of law Professor Harry Zavos made presentations and presented documentations to the City Council, that there were flaws with Prop 218, and he even suggested that Wildom may have been confused with the monthly and bimonthly data. And yet, the City Council passed it regardless. This time around, the city supposedly has the expertise, having assembled a team of experts, including the city auditor, to review the new proposed rate structure. Mayor Sinanian even said that this time we're crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, that this is the appropriate plan, the right plan. The major difference between Bartel Wells and Wildom's COSA is that this time it's guaranteed not to lose money. Your agenda tonight deleted the 15 COSA categories, which I have right here, that included Bartel's Wells COSA, that was included in their COSA in April 25, 2014, which was reduced to four categories, single-family, multifamily, irrigation, commercial. The city has the highest peaking factor, and most of it is attributed to, because most of it is for outside or outdoor usage. And what happened is, it's conveniently grouped with other entities such as multifamily, which has some of the lowest peaking factors, because their tenants or most of the water use is indoors, not outdoors. So it's apparent that this COSA being voted on tonight violates the state's constitution's proportionality requirement that water rates shall not exceed the proportional cost of the service attributable to the ratepayers parcel. Now Professor Zavos sent every city official sitting here tonight, including Bartel Wells, with his analysis and supporting documentation outlining various Prop 18 violations that he had identified, and that was mailed to you a week ago on July 15th. The Glendale Coalition for Better Government will review Bartel Wells' response tonight, and if the COSA does pass in its present form, without a satisfactory response, if we determine that, to the issues raised by Professor Zavos, that this matter will or may eventually end up in a court of law. It's not that we are against any rate increase, that, it's just that the rate increase be in accordance with Prop 218's proportionality requirements, and it be in proportion with the parcel of the ratepayer.
Thank you, Mr. Landon.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, ask, sir, sir?
Ms. Landon?
I'm just curious, yes, you. I was just curious, where'd you get all your information? Did you research it on your own, or?
No, we, I did it with the Glendale Coalition with-
Okay, so it's a coalition that developed it all together?
We did that, and some of us did it on our own.
And you? On your own, or?
I did it in conjunction with other people in the coalition.
Okay.
Maybe a better question would be, what is your background?
I'm a CPA. I worked for the State Controller's Office for 31 years. I worked in the State Controller's Office, and I did audits.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Landon.
Congratulations, 31 years.
I'm retired.
I would too, after that.
Aram Kazazian, followed by Frank Gallo. Three minutes.
Aram Kazazian, I just want to start with, first thing that what the gentleman recommended, 4444 is the best, I think you should vote on tonight, because if you want to increase the revenue, just stop transferring the $2 million a year from water into electric, which you do transfer, you've been transferring all along with a different way, and I'll be more than glad to show you how you're doing that, if you're not aware, I'm pretty sure city manager and Steve Zern knows about it, if they want to tell you the truth. Now also, there was a 36% water increase, by the way. It was 2008 or 2009, I believe it was, it was a total of 36% raise at that time. That was the raise that won the fact. So that is on the books. So they can pull the record and give you exact numbers, that the total over four years was 36% at the time. In fact, Mr. Najarian voted for it at the time I was here. Two years ago, when the Wildom report was here, me and a number of others came in and said that the Wildom report is flawed, and I even said that you can take this report and throw it in the trash can, the wastebasket, there were so many errors in there that we brought to the attention of the City Council, and the City Council refused to listen to it at the time. And you knowingly, intentionally have voted for that increase, and knowingly that report was flawed. Now, another thing is that, as Kenneth Landon said, I believe this is a violation of 218 because some of the numbers that I'm reading are not correct on this report, but I believe if you want to vote on it tonight, you should still go ahead and try to put the people that are involved into the table and see what the problems are, what is causing the violation, so we'll not have problems again. We don't want to go through again another lawsuit involved, which is, it's a problem. And thank you very much. So I'll say that 4444, what you should do, and stop the $2 million transfer, which is you're doing that from water to electric, and I'll be more than glad to bring your records of that to you someday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kazazian. Frank Gallo, but before you start, just one second. Mr. Zern, do you have any recollection of there being a 36% increase in 2008?
I don't. I'd have to go back, I think he's talking about a compounded increase over the four years.
Even then, if we were having another increase in 2011, that would be something like 8% a year? It sounds a little excessive.
Yeah, it does to me too, Mr. Mayor. I can get that information. And then, as I recall, and I'd have to verify that as well, there had been a large, a long gap in between that rate increase and the past one, which I didn't think was like 2003 or something like that. So, but I can certainly look into that for you.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Frank Gallo. I understand the need for a water rate increase due to the increasing costs, operating costs, yet I expect such an increase to be fair and compliant with the law. I have gone over the cost of study analysis COSA, and I see that there are improvements over the previous faulty COSA. Unfortunately, I see some problems with this study, making it unfair and uncompliant with the law. 15 different categories that existed in 2012 were collapsed into four, in what seems, and attend to simplify billing. As a result of collapsing those categories, the per-unit water consumption, water charge, or some of them is higher than their per share. Some of the 15 categories with the highest contribution to peak demand, such as the city, pay the same charge or peak demand as some categories with the lowest contribution, such as small businesses. In summary, the collapsing of the categories results in those clients with low peak demand subsidizing categories with high peak demand. This is not only unfair, but contrary to the intent of Prop 218. If I were to vote on the water rate increase ordinance, I would question the appropriateness of collapsing the 15 categories into four. I wouldn't like to see my voting record with a dark spot, like the one that took place over the Wildom report two years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. If I can ask some background on the collapsing of the categories, the purpose and whether the characterization is correct?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
You never had 15 categories of water rates. Nobody has ever had 15 categories of water rates. What they're talking about is there's a table that has not been removed from the COSA, it's been relocated to the appendix, reorganizing the information, that draws on data from your electric utility about classes of commercial customers, and observes the peaking factor that your data this year reflect those customers to have occurred. What's a peaking factor? Peaking factor is a measure of the extent to which you take a lot of water all at once. Because somebody who takes a lot of water all at once needs a bigger pipe than somebody who takes the same volume of water over 24 hours. You can get a lot through a little straw, but if you need it all at once, you need a fat straw. And the size of the straw is one of the capital components that goes into operating utility. It's only one. The other things that matter are where you are in the city, what pressure elevation you're in, whether you need treated water or not, whether you take steady requirement throughout the calendar year or a lot in the summer. There are a lot of different factors, all of which affect your costs. You, like every water utility, use some of them and not all of them. So peaking is a legitimate consideration. The M1 Manual recommends that you use it as a factor, but only as one factor. Another thing that's been said is that the city has, revealed truth, capital T, the city has a large peaking factor compared to other commercial uses. That's because a table showed that for a year, that the city's use as compared to other customers who are treated as commercial for electrical purposes had lower peaking factors. As I said before, we could come up with the peaking factors for left-handed people and right-handed people too. Does that mean that left-handed people have a capital T true peaking capital that's different and should be charged more for water? The question is what this measurement means. Your ratemaking team says that the city's use of water, which has an irrigation component and an indoor component, a health and safety component and a recreational component, is best treated as a commercial use like all other commercial uses, because it's not like a house, and it's not like an industrial application. That strikes me as unsurprising. Institutional uses are commonly lumped in with commercial uses. That's the standard practice in California, that's the standard practice around the country. When people tell you that Prop 218 requires that rates be proportional to the cost of service attributable to the property, they're right, that's what it says. Prop 218 does not tell you what service to attribute to a property. So what service are you providing? Obviously, it's water service, but the components of that service, you decide, that's your judgment. There's more than one way to do it. And what is proportion- And what does proportionality mean? It means that costs are roughly apportioned to fees, but we don't know how to apportion costs in any single way. Think of it this way, you're a kid with a lemonade stand, and you're offering lemonade with sugar in it, and you're offering lemonade with saccharin in it, and you've got ten receipts from the grocery store for the various pieces you bought. How do you price the lemonade with sugar and the lemonade with saccharin? In that case, it's fairly easy, because they've got a fairly simple set of components, throw in brownies and cookies and other things, and you're starting to make judgments, how much of my staff time goes into this product, how much of my refrigeration cost goes into this product. You make judgments, because there's no one rule that says staff cost must be distributed in this way, and these judgments have to be within a range of reason. So what you're being told is because there's a table in your report that uses fifteen categories of electrical customers, and shows a water peaking factor for those categories, that it's written into our constitution that you must have fifteen commercial water rates. Yet, that constitution applies to 479 other cities in California, none of whom have fifteen classes of commercial water customers. It's just not so. The world isn't as simple as your critics would like. One other point I'll make, and then I'll get out of the way. Somebody said, "The Willdam study was terrible, we told you so, and you adopted it anyway." Maybe so, but people think this study is terrible too. I have never seen a water rate study that somebody didn't think was terrible. I've never seen one that got the Pulitzer Prize. I've never seen one that got unanimous public support. So how do you, as volunteer laypeople, you're at least lucky enough to have been an engineer, to distinguish the criticism, which is just, "We'd rather not pay water rates," from the criticism that is, "There's something wrong with the cost of service analysis." Ultimately, I think you have to rely on your professional staff, and you have to rely on the professionals that consult with you, and when they blow it, that's what the city attorney's for.
Thank you.
I would just submit to you, sir, that the fifteen categories, such as they are that they're being referred to, Mr. Collintino referred to, it's there in Appendix C on page 164.
Thank you. Mr. Chau. Albert Hoffman, followed by Harry Zavos.
My name's Albert Hoffman, native of Glendale, and I guess I've been fighting this water rate business for an electric rate since 2007. We've got reports on, big deal is the transfers, which are a violation of the charter. And what I'd like to say, the next speaker is Harry following me, and I've been thoroughly disgusted on how he's been treated by this council and the city manager. They make it like he can't even read the charter. There's a law professor who can't interpret a charter? Give me a break. You people put him down like he's just a nothing, but that's the way it is. You don't listen to the residents of Glendale, you all really work for us. That's really what it's all about, and you should listen to us. You come up with some good ideas, but you just discount them. The decorum of this council over this past couple of years has been atrocious, the way they've treated the public speakers. It really has been. I mean, "Oh, if you don't like the rates, move." Isn't that a good answer to give to the public? Just move, if you don't like it, move. And then, when we say, "You're not being legal with this whole thing," well, sue us. Well, that's apparently happening. I really hope that Councilwoman Devine, you can bring some kind of decorum with this group of people, because it's been shameful, the way they have treated the public speakers, who essentially, you work for us. Thank you.
Thank you. I honestly don't remember ever treating Dr. Zavos with anything other than respect, but, Dr. Zavos, given your particular role in opposing the previous COSA, and also your correspondence with council and city manager about this COSA, I'm going to give you more time than the three minutes.
Oh, thank you. I probably won't take a lot of time, I'll try to stay within three minutes, but I appreciate it.
Okay, you have five minutes.
And let me just, before I begin, make one quick point. A statement was made here that's simply not true.
Well, are we on, are we? Is this your statement?
All right, I'll begin now.
Okay.
And I wrote this, so I can stay within my time limit.
Thank you.
Councilman, my name is Harry Zavos, I'm here representing myself and the Glendale Coalition for Better Government, and let me add, I am the only one that has been authorized by the board to speak on this issue tonight. If the water utility is receiving less revenue than the cost of operations, then logic dictates that the city increase fees, but it must do so fairly and in compliance with law. For the official record, I have a packet of materials that I previously submitted to the city, and which I will submit tonight for the record. It documents several Proposition 218 violations. For example, the Constitution requires that water fees shall not exceed the proportional cost of the service attributable to the ratepayer's parcel. Using data in Table 17, the April 25 COSA by Barton Wells, and incidentally, I should indicate to you that those, well, let me continue, I calculated that by collapsing fifteen categories of ratepayers into four, and let me stop there, because up until the Willdam report, those fifteen categories, as a matter of fact, were being used to charge customers, and I think Ramon will confirm this, this was brought up at our meeting, people from GWP said, "It's always been done that way," and I documented that in fact, you did it based on those fifteen categories, and you only changed it when you adopted the Willdam proposal. All right, I calculated that by collapsing fifteen categories of ratepayers into four, the proposed ordinance will charge some ratepayers more than the cost attributable to their parcel, and some less. Interestingly, one of the categories that fares the best is the city. Those calculations are part of this packet that is posted on the Coalition for Better Government's website, including that original Table 17. Tonight's COSA version does not question my calculations, rather, it asserts that the city has the right to create categories. Yes, it does, but not in such a way as to work at cross purposes with the goals of Proposition 218. It cannot create categories that result, based on actual empirical data, that result in some ratepayers paying less than the cost attributable to their parcel, and others paying more. You cannot create categories that ensure that constitutional dictates render ineffectual, are rendered ineffectual. Additionally, today's version of the COSA deletes the data from Table 17 that made my calculations possible. I hear now that it's somewhere in the, I think it's an exhibit, and that's fine, and I would hope people would look at that. There was one more point that was made that I wanted to correct, and it's going to elude me. Look, the bottom line is this, you have data based on fifteen categories, you use those fifteen categories up until you adopted the Willdam report, you got data on those fifteen categories, and once you collapse it in four, I have demonstrated, using the COSA data, that you end up charging some people more and some people less. And incidentally, the statement was made, what is the peaking factor? It's only one year, but that peaking factor is precisely what is being used to calculate the rates. You can't discount it for the purposes of being criticized, and then use it as the basis for calculating the rates. It just doesn't wash.
Thank you, Dr. Zavos. Robert Getz, yes, we have questions, yes.
I just wanted to ask, Ramon, is it, did we use the fifteen categories prior to Willdam?
We only had one rate prior to Willdam, we had one rate charge across the board. We didn't have the four classifications that we're using prior to Willdam.
Just one rate, okay.
That's correct.
Wait, 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 fifteen? He said we had fifteen rates that we were using.
That's what the Willdam report said.
I'm asking, I'm asking you.
There were fifteen.
How many rates did we have?
There were fifteen classifications, one rate, across the board. I mean, we compared that to the electrical classifications, that's what Willdam did as well. But the rate prior to Willdam, we charged $1 for HCF for what, commercial, we charged $1 for residential as well.
But you had fifteen, but you were using.
Class specs, that was identified in electric. Again, prior to Willdam, that's the same classifications that we had, but we had one rate across the board.
I stand ready.
Mayor Sinan, and council members, for the record, I know the city manager indicated this too, nothing has been deleted from the April 25 COSA. The table that Mr. Zavos has been referring to, it is now in Appendix C. So just for the record, I wanted to clarify that.
Robert Getz, followed by Alfred Rodriguez, three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, I'm Bob Getz, a Glendale resident. I have some questions this evening on this important subject. GWP says more water rate increases are necessary, so it can better maintain operations, rebuild cash reserves, and replace a flawed rate schedule. Can't these proposed rate increases be trimmed without derailing the utility's efforts, their goals? Their goals are very, very, very necessary, but my question is, can't we still make some clippings and some trimmings on some of those rate categories, and still allow them to succeed in those goals? City Council took a positive step to shore up GWP's finances when you recently halted the annual transfer of $4 million from the GWP's Water Department. This action will allow the utility to retain more operating revenues for capital improvements and building their cash reserves. Shouldn't this make GWP less reliant on rate increases to improve its financial condition? The department will have at least $4 million a year to use toward moving away from rate increases and rebuilding necessary facilities. Certainly, it seems that they could do a lot more with less rate increases. Glendale ratepayers have faced several water rate increases since 2008. I too would like to know what single-family ratepayers have seen as far as a rate increase over the last six years. My estimate, based on the GWP's figures, is, I think, 31%, 32%. That question was asked earlier. I'm going to skip over this. Incidentally, these cost increases don't include the impact of Glendale's 7% utility tax. You know, every tax that we get on water rates, there's a 7% tax on that, and that over a period of time accumulates to real money. In closing, I would like to remind council that several water rate increases have occurred during the worst economic downturn in memory. Unfortunately, many Glendale ratepayers are still recovering from the recession, and continue to experience lost jobs and stagnant incomes. They will appreciate whatever help you can provide by cutting back the proposed rate increases and reducing the impact on their water bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Getz.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Zern, about how much did Chevy Chase reservoir cost?
Approximately $25 million.
And how about the Dietrich reservoirs?
That was in the neighborhood of 12, I believe.
It's 37 million, if I count just those two.
Correct.
Not counting what we're doing on Glendale Avenue right now, or others, $4 million a year, it's going to take quite a few years.
I recall that over 10 years, we had $4 million worth of transfers, that's 40 million.
Thank you, Mr. Getz.
Thank you, Mr. Feeney.
Well, Mr. Getz asked a question. I'm going to ask them, not you, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Getz.
And he had asked, how much people's rates have gone up in the last six years? But didn't we just see in the presentation that most users' rates went down?
That's correct, Ms. Feeney.
So, Mr. Getz, did you hear that? I just wanted you to get an answer, you don't have to, I'm not going to ask you to speak, but just to get an answer to your question, because of the flawed Willdam report, people's rates actually went down over the past several years, not up.
We can't hear you from back there.
Let's have the staff answer this, Mr.?
And Mr. Zern?
Just to give us some clarity.
As you're answering that question, please also address the core question, which was posited by Mr. Getz, whether there's a way to trim the increase, or there's a way to avoid the increase, and why is it that we even have to even be speaking about this subject matter right now?
I think part of the problem that you have, and certainly Steve can put whatever detail he needs to on it, is that when the City Council took the step, the conscious policy decision, to not increase rates during the Great Recession, which you can argue was the right thing to do, or you can say, "No, that was not the right thing to do, you should have been doing smaller increases." Regardless, you tried to empathize with those ratepayers. Where we erred, where GWP had made the mistake, was that when we halted those rate increases, and when we didn't sell the bonds as postulated in the original capital program, when those two things did not happen, GWP did not stop doing major capital improvements like Glorieta, like Chevy Chase, like Dietrich, and as a result, you continued to eat into that reserve, and at the same time, as your fixed cost, because the cost of water would continue to increase, you became increasingly out of whack. The day of reckoning did come, the council took the courageous step of saying, "All right, now the recession is ebbing, it's time to right that ship," and here we are today. Unfortunately, we took that step with a consultant that got it wrong. And at the same time that we were looking to do a rate increase, we also moved forward with a rate restructure. That is the confluence of where our problems are, and now we're having to come back, two years after that rate increase in 2012, and make these adjustments. So when you look at the single-family rates from 1011, average single-family rates were at 63.78, and 1112, 63.60, then 66.81, 72.12, 79.80 is what we're proposing with this rate plan. That is, especially as you index that against other types of consumables and commodities that people buy in their everyday lives, does represent a good value. When you look at the multifamily, which we have a great deal of, that average multifamily bill went from 434.49, as shown in the staff presentation, or even where we are recommending as part of this rate plan, 436.57, effectively the same number several years later.
Mr. Getz asked a pretty simple question, which was, in the past six years, how much has, let's say, single-family residential rates actually gone up? And I know we voted on a rate increase, so I assume it has gone up, but maybe, you know, can someone just answer that question in six years?
In six years, I can go back to 1011, and it's $16 a month, looks like.
It went up $16 a month in the past six years.
In the past five years.
Past five years for the average single-family residence. Do we know what percentage that is? Because we've heard 35%, 40% being thrown out, but it doesn't sound like it's that much to me, but I'm not looking at all the numbers.
Actually, ma'am, let me back that up, because that dollar, that $16 a month, is if you were to adopt this rate plan. As we sit here today, it's gone up less than $10.
That's a big difference.
Surely.
Let's get these numbers right.
Surely. We go from 63.76 to 72.
That's what we're looking at. He just asked, in the past six years, you can say five years if you want, how, what percentage has the rate gone up? Does anybody know?
Well, it's less than $10, and on average, as we indicated, based on the rate scenario that we had put forth, the average single-family individual is paying $5.37 less than what was projected.
So in five, six years, it's gone down?
It's gone up, but it has not gone up at the rate that was intended.
So about what percentage?
14%.
14%, $9.
Okay.
That's since 2008.
That's since 2010.
Okay, so, okay, so it's not gone up 35%, 40% if people have been saying? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
State your name.
Mr. Weber, and members of the city council. Just have a couple of questions.
Please state your name for the record.
Alfred Rodriguez.
Thank you.
A couple of questions to Mr. Zern, and a couple remarks. Basically, I haven't done any research as far as what prices, consumption, and whatever. Question is, I have a small building, commercial building, and it has a three-inch fire line. And last year, they billed me $375 a month additional for the fire line. Now, either the three-line is supposed to be a exemption on the charges, and I don't know what is the city or the water power going to do about that money collected from us. Also, I wanted to ask a question. If a mistake was made, and that mistake was on single-family dwellings and multiple-family dwellings, why are we increasing the 5% on everybody across the board? Are we going to pay for your mistake or for the single-family dwellings and multiple-family dwellings? And my comment is that we are just coming out of a recession, and we are promoting inflation with this increase. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Zern, can you answer that first question?
Yes.
You have already answered it.
I have, yes. Obviously, we, the fire line charges were excessive. And it's our intention that, based on the new rate, if approved by the city council, the difference is, we'll go back, recalculate the rate, and refund all of those fire line customers that were overcharged.
Happy Christmas.
Thank you. And last speaker is Vartan Arakelyan. State your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. We have heard a lot about the price.
Your name for the record, please.
Sorry?
Your name?
Vartan Arakelyan. We have heard about a lot about increasing the price for the water. I never thought, like, say, 5% 444 in the last four, five years, so coming up with a 30% water. I've never concentrated about educating the people how to use the water. It took me six months to educate my family how to recycle papers, cans, bottles, and separate them from the trash. And I'm sure for the city council members and, Mr. Mayor, wouldn't be that much cost to produce a movie for my single family or whoever to how they using and reducing, how to reduce of the saving the water, for saving the water and not the waste water, like taking the shower, toilets, water hoses, has a pipe or valve on them, sprinklers, et cetera, et cetera, that you know more than me of every detail of any single-family houses and multi-family buildings. This education can be throughout through the TVs by to show the people to understand how to save the water and just understanding this, what if this situation goes, this drought situation goes more than two or next three years? What are we going to do? Increasing the rate? Okay, I'm a single-family. I don't have money. I can pay that $20, 5%, 4% by the next year and next year. I can pay that. But what if I bring? So am I going to save the water? What if we go to a very critical situation? If this drought going to continue?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arakelyan. Okay, that was the last speaker.
Mayor, we want to ask our consultant to come back.
Yeah.
Answer any questions. He's been jotting notes.
Yeah, I think most of the notes that I've taken have been answered at one point or another, but if there are other questions, I'll be happy to address them. I think we're in pretty good shape.
Do have a question, not sure if it's for you or for our staff. Is it true that, and I sort of, I understand that there's a, seems to be like a logical disconnect between the issue of these categories, the 15 or 14 categories, and actually the rate, the four different rates. There is not necessarily a relationship there. But is it true that collapsing the 15 into four, which I assume hasn't even happened, somehow leads to unfairness in the individual rates?
Fairness is a policy judgment.
Well, has the collapsing taken place?
What I understand Professor Zavos to be arguing is that because you have the data to distinguish your commercial class into 15 groups, that you must. That's what I understand him to be saying. Because you can, you must. And that's nowhere written in the law. What the law tells us is that you may group your customers into reasonable classifications of like demand and like service. And as long as you act within the range of reason, the courts will defer to the classifications that you draw. Classifications that your staff is proposing, single-family, multifamily, commercial, and industrial, are almost universally used in the industry around the country. So I see no risk in your doing so.
You're saying that if we used, had 15 group, 15 different rates, as it sounds like Mr. Zavos is arguing for, he's shaking his head.
I can't speak, but that's not my position.
Okay. Well, I spoke earlier about the broad.
Am I the only one who heard that?
I am confused now also. So let me ask you another follow-up. In theory, we could break categories down even further. We could have 30 categories that are better descriptive or better gauge water usage and therefore make the rates fair. Is that true?
Sure.
And this categorization could be unlimited?
Think of it this way. You could measure the length of every pipe, and you could figure out to the penny what it costs to maintain every pipe. And the guy at the end of the street will pay a little bit more than the guy at the beginning of the street, because the guy at the beginning of the street doesn't need the whole pipe. With a supercomputer, and a lot of time, you could do that. The question becomes, should you? Is that good public policy? At some level, we're all using the same utility. And you've got to strike that balance between complexity and fairness, one measure, and simplicity and administrability. There's no one right answer. I told you that the city of San Juan Capistrano counts the number of kids you have. So at a certain level, they do have 15 rates, because it really depends on how many people are in your house, and they expect you to report when you change the population of your house. More power to them. They are very efficient in the use of water, but you're not making that choice, and I'm not trying to sell that choice. Different communities make different choices, and that's okay.
But nothing, you're a Prop 218 expert. Clearly, nobody has argued that. I haven't heard anybody say that you're not qualified. So once again, in your opinion, you don't see any constitutional violations in this rate structure?
No. And let me put, let me come at this another way. The rate differential between your commercial class and your irrigation class is 0.09 per 100 cubic feet. Applied to the city's irrigation use, I'm told that 0.09 is $24,000 a year. Given the numbers we're talking about, I don't want to use the phrase "decimal dust", but it's a very small factor, and it is well within the tolerances of this system. Think about it this way. When you set rates, you're predicting the weather. Because when it rains, people use less water. When it doesn't rain, they use more. How much water they use affects your costs. So we're making predictions about the weather. We're making predictions, quite frankly, about the fertility rate. The economy comes back, and people have more kids, they're going to have more diapers to wash, and they're going to use more water. We're predicting all sorts of things about the future that are necessarily going to be wrong. Your rates are going to produce too much money or too little. That's the only thing we know. Because they couldn't possibly produce exactly enough money, because we can't read the future. So all the law requires is that you try reasonably to get it right, and if there's a deficit, the fund has to make it up later, and if there's a surplus, it stays in the fund. So this isn't rocket science, and it isn't science at all. It's just the best we can do with cost accounting. And at the end of the day, you're left to make reasonable judgments for your community. And in my professional opinion, you are well within the range of reason here. You don't have to adopt these rates. You don't have to adopt any of the alternatives either. You have the unpleasant responsibility of choosing.
Hate to beat a dead horse, but have you, did you have an opportunity to study the Willdan COSA, and if so, or your colleagues? And if so, was the, I guess, the two-month period, was that the cause of, or was that...
I have not studied that COSA. I have been told what the mistakes that were drawn from it. I think Mr. Dove has studied it, so maybe I should let him take the mic.
Mr. Dove?
We reviewed the Willdan COSA, and there was a basic mistake. It's almost hard to believe that it could have happened. But when you're dealing with a lot of data, sometimes it just gets entered wrong and nobody notices. But yeah.
See, that's scary, when you say that, because that leaves the possibility that, hey, sometimes we're going to enter a lot of data here. I hope that doesn't happen now.
We were extremely careful.
So the reason I ask that is because we're being asked, what's the council doing, what's the city of Glendale doing to make sure that the mistake that happened with the Willdan COSA does not get repeated again?
So I would think that, if I may, with all due respect to our illustrious consultant from Bartle Wells, that really comes back to the staff and to your direction of my efforts, my direction to Steve Zern and his people, Mike Garcia and his people. I can tell you, having shown up here in January of '12 and being presented with a multi-year rate increase and saying, well, you know, if the rates are going up, if the fire line rates are going up by several hundred percent on auto dealers, don't worry about it, they only have to sell another car, is the line that was fed to me. And I said, wow, are you sure? That just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. That's not very empathetic. That's not good customer service. But no, that's where we are financially, and this being, you know, big city Glendale, we know what we're doing. We're spending tens of millions of dollars a year on infrastructure. We need to go this route. So I kick myself, and I throw myself right before you, to say, I thought I had done enough to delay the hearing so that we could at least talk through the issues with our, especially business partners at the Chamber of Commerce. That was not obviously very sufficiently enough. This time around, knowing that it is, it's being constructed on my watch, I am your city manager, Steve Zern is my director of GWP, we brought everybody cousins by the dozens to take a look at this, to make sure that it wasn't happening among two or three people on the fourth floor of the Perkins Building, and that we wouldn't just abdicate the responsibility for putting together a monumental rate restructure and just trust that we're paying these folks money, that it's going to come out right in the end. I would have hoped and expected that people making that amount of money on our team would have done a more conscientious, more professional job of checking all of those facts, because again, as Doug indicates, it was a head-sapper of a mistake. I mean, how wrong could you get, that most fundamental thing? And in being so completely wrong-headed in its simplicity, it kind of explains itself, that who would have thought that Willdan Financial Service, that this huge company does business up and down the state, all around, could get it that wrong? And we trusted too much so, to paraphrase a line from a former president, you know, trust but verify. We brought in a consultant, brought in, to look over our staff, and had the legal folks, brought in additional special counsel for them, brought in our own internal audit function, brought in the finance people, and everybody kicked this thing to death, to the point that, if you recall, this discussion was supposed to happen earlier this year. But because it wasn't just right, because the expectation of the city council was going to be, and rightly so, that if we got it wrong, then you're looking for new staff to run this utility. That's how grave we were in looking at this. And as Mr. Colentuno, who I've known a long time, indicates, and he said it very aptly, that what we're doing is predicting the weather. We're looking at this to say, as we run this business, here's our best guess at what it's supposed to be. And I think we've been very thorough in giving you that best guess, recognizing that it's never going to be 100% accurate, but it's a heck of a lot better than what it was before based on the amount of diligence and professionalism that the staff that we've assembled put into this.
And I know that you're saying, you know, how we could make this mistake, but you're being a little too self-deprecating, because you weren't there, and certainly Mr. Zern was not the head of GWP at the time when the Willdan COSA came about. So we have an entirely different team looking at this COSA and a team that I think takes ownership, interest, and responsibility for its results.
Most certainly, sir. And as Mr. Zern will tell you, that the sewer all flows downhill, so to the extent that we were there when it happened, it is what it is. And we take that, we take full responsibility for that, and we're trying to fix it such as when it was suggested to us by the former consultant, that the answer to our problem was simply to go back and bill folks for that which they'd already used. We kind of laughed it out of the realm of possibility, but we did square it with the council to make sure we were speaking for you, and of course, city council was very clear that that was not an option.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to, you know, say again that we ran the numbers backwards, forwards, sideways, up and down, backwards. We checked that model many, many times over and ran it to make sure that it's right this time. And the staff audited our work, and we are extremely confident the numbers are right.
And you know we're not adverse to suing consultants now.
Not at all.
Making mistakes.
And I will tell you that the belts, suspenders, and garters in all of this is that we did request and demand of Bartle Wells that they beef up their errors and omissions insurance for that very reason, ma'am.
I want to say again something that Doug just said, because I want to say it my way, which is say, when you finish analysis like this and you arrive at a rate structure, the way you test the rate structure is you apply those rates to your historic water sales. Given what your customers bought last year, had you applied these rates to those sales, how much money would it have produced? And with that amount of money, have covered your bills and not more. That's called testing the model against your actual data. We did that this time. It's not clear whether it was done the last time. It was plainly done this time.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have more questions? Because I'll close the public hearing, and we can start speaking amongst ourselves.
I just want to touch on the Willdan issue again. I think discussing the Willdan report, the flawed Willdan report, is, at this point, pretty much a red herring. It's been brought up by the opponents of the water rate increase. The fact is that not one customer is paying extra for the flaw in the Willdan report, except for those fire line customers for whom we've stated about three times that we are going to be making a cash payment to them for any overcharges that it resulted. Not one customer in the city of Glendale has paid extra because of the Willdan error. In fact, the city of Glendale bore the brunt of the lost revenue, for which we are going to let a superior court judge decide on the remedy for that situation. So let's not talk about Willdan. It was a screw-up on their part. We could have provided greater oversight, but ultimately, we were relying in good faith and with proper justification on a preeminent financial services company, and they blew it, and we're dealing with that. But the issue before us today is number one. Does our COSA meet all the requirements of Proposition 218? And we have heard, speaking of preeminent figures, we've heard from Mr. Colentuno, who has argued how many times before the state Supreme Court? Five times before the state Supreme Court. And I appreciate those with a legal background, and I have a legal background, and Mr. Sinayan's attorney, and we have city attorneys, but I don't think any one of us in this room can match qualifications with Mr. Colentuno. Therefore, we owe a proper and dutiful level of credibility for his comments and his opinions that he's giving us. And that is why we hired him, to make sure that what we're doing is absolutely to the T, to the T in the letter of the law, proper. Now, are there issues, as he stated, in the policy? Of course, there's policy disputes. Some say, trim it down a little bit. Don't go 544. That's something we can discuss. But to say that what we're doing today is illegal, is improper, you know what? You talk about decorum. I think that's just as indecorious as... decorum. I think that's just as indecorious as, what's the word?
Indecorious.
Indecorious, indecorious, as any other charges that are made before us. We've got an issue with the city. We've got to keep our water utility funded properly to provide all of us with clean, pure, reliable drinking water. And that's what we're trying to do here today.
Ms. Friedman?
Well, if you're going to close the public hearing, I was ready to.
If you have no more questions, we're going to close the public hearing. Ms. Friedman?
Well, I agree with Ms. Sunajerian, first of all. I'm very glad that Mr. Colentino?
Colentuno.
Colentuno is here. I didn't realize they'd be bringing in a Proposition 218 expert. I'm glad that they did. It was very interesting for me to hear more of what the law requires and how it works. I appreciate that. And it gives me a great deal of confidence in our process. In terms of, you know, one of the questions that the public has asked, and rightly so, is what are we going to do about the errors in the past? How are we going to correct that? And I want to point out to people that the team that was, that oversaw the Willdan report isn't sitting up here right now. So as much as I don't want to talk about personnel matters, but I think that's very significant, that we have a different team here. And they know that their charge is to make sure that, to the extent anybody can, that this is done correctly. And we're suing Willdan, or at least we're going to take that action and vote on it tonight, which is unusual. I don't think Willdan has been sued before for this kind of an error. So this is pretty significant. I can tell you that when I've gone to, I went to a water conference, and this was the talk of the water conference. People came up to me that I didn't know and said, is it true that you're going to be doing this? We heard about what Willdan did. This is a huge company. It's not like we hired the cheapest guy on the block because they came in with the, you know, the new guys who didn't really know what they were doing. We thought we'd give them a chance. This is a company that, to this day, is still being hired by water agencies up and down the state to do this very type of study. Somebody asked about educating the public in conservation, and he's absolutely right that we need to do that. We don't have to produce the videos. They're out there, Metropolitan Water District, State Water Board. There's plenty of conservation how-to videos. And I hope that we show them on GTV6 as much as we absolutely can, so that we give people the tools that they need. And also let them know about programs that are available. MWD just doubled their conservation budget, meaning that the amount of money that's available to the public in terms of rebates for water-saving features and turf removal has been doubled. So that's something that we need to let the public know about, what programs are available. If you buy a low-flow toilet, you can basically get it paid for, because the good ones cost about $150, and I think the rebate's $100 or $150. So there's a lot of programs like that that we absolutely need to let the public know about. Lastly, in terms of the rates themselves, as much as I understand the staff wanting to kind of get us back on full financial footing, I'm not going to support the recommended rate increase. Instead, I would support the compromise, I would say, of the 444 rate increase. I think it's a lot less of...
4444?
It's four years of...
Yes. Yeah. It's a lot less sticker shock for people. It's going to be a lot gentler on people's pocketbook. I know it doesn't get us exactly where we want to go, but I think it gets us far enough. I've been watching Mr. Zern now for five years in Public Works, and I know that if there's anybody who knows how to stretch a dollar, it's Steve Zern. And I think that he's going to bring more of a money conservation approach to GWP than the previous administration. And I know that he knows that's his charge. So I don't, I think that he will be fine with having the decreased revenue come into the utility. I trust in his ability to still make it work and to still get us back on firm financial footing.
And let's just be clear what we're doing today. It's going to be an introduction of an ordinance.
Right.
And that has to specify the specific rates that are proposed, or can a, you know, a tweaking at the following meeting be performed?
Mayor Sunayan, council members, we'll be introducing an ordinance today. There are also two resolutions. The resolutions will carry over to next week to see if council is so inclined to adopt the ordinance. The rates are not actually in the ordinance. We are attaching the rates to the resolution, which establishes the rates. So we could come back next week, depending on what council so desires. We will have the appropriate rate tables attached to the resolution to be adopted along with the ordinance. Now, the resolution will go effect when the ordinance goes into effect, which will be 30 days from its adoption.
Well, my initial, my initial thoughts were, after seeing the slide, to go with a 544. Let's see that up there. 54, preferred is what? 544?
5444.
4. And so really, the bottom line is the, is the second to last row, where you look at the cash reserves that are generated. The staff recommended would get us to 6 million by the end of fiscal year 2018. The 4, Ms. Friedman's 4444 would get us to 4.4. So I'm, I think that's where I'm at. I'm, for either one of those, I am hearing from, I mean, probably the most, to be honest, I forget which speaker, or maybe two speakers discussed it, acknowledged the fact we need a rate increase and requested that we go as softly as possible to obtain the financial stability that we're seeking. And I do appreciate those comments out of everything that, that came before us. So I would probably be leaning towards the 4444, because that does get us to where we need to be, not with the level of cushion and security that the staff recommended would be. But I do want to say that we are in a very serious drought situation. The governor has declared a drought. All of our water agencies have declared drought situations. Next week, we'll be dealing with a vote on going to our stage-two of water conservation levels. And we saw from the slide that 60% of our water usage for a single-family home is for irrigation. And I would, I would be wagering a bet that out of that, probably 80% is for watering a lawn, a green grass lawn. So I would like to have a discussion. In this time of drought, I would request that we put aside all our concerns about aesthetics and conformity, and that we retake the issue of permitting synthetic grass in front yards. It saves water. It reduces fertilizer use. It reduces pesticide use. It reduces green waste, and it reduces pollution from lawn care equipment. I think now is the time, this now is the, really, the critical time to discuss this. In fact, the MWD, if you go to their website, offers rebates up to $2 a square foot for installing artificial turf. And I would love to get a second from anyone on council to discuss that issue.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 9B is the issue of delaying the imposition of any applicable drought rate for a period of six years. So...
Six months.
Six months. I'm sorry. Six years. God knows what's going to happen in six years.
Six years.
Six months. Sorry. So is that something that you're...
I know. We're going to take that up next, next week.
That would follow with it, certainly. Direction is always appreciated, but it would be something for next week.
You know, to be quite honest with you, I'd like to delay giving my opinion on that.
Until next week.
Yeah. I'd like to look at the ramifications and the cost issues involved.
So the resolution that's associated with 9B1 would be kicked over until next week?
All the rate-making would come together next week.
That's right. Mayor Sunayan, council members, all of the resolutions would be carried over to next week.
Okay. Fine, then. Why don't we just take it up next week?
It was a supplemental, just for the record, it was a supplemental report because the water board action came out at the same, roughly the same, right after we had published the report.
But I mean, the rates, I thought we were doing the rate-setting tonight.
It comes as an ordinance that you introduced tonight, and then it gets voted on next time.
With the number, though. With the preferred number. We don't come back and discuss all of the, all of the rate options, do we?
It's council's pleasure. We would hope that if you, if there's consensus, that we would bring you back a resolution with the consensus.
Okay. So we're trying to come to a consensus.
But our recommendation still would be that we suspend those drought rates for six months while we figure out truly what direction the state is headed.
Very well. Mr. Weaver?
Okay. Try to make it simplistic, as I understand it. Willdan, I used to work with, quite often with the Corps of Engineers for decades. And they were good at what they did. I don't know if they got into a new area where they don't have as much expertise. As I understand it, first part is to correct what Willdan did wrong. The second is to put in a new rate structure going forward. Two components, two different things. Now, Willdan made a mistake. I love sports. Looking at sports, if you're playing football in the NFL, you draft a quarterback. You might find out he's a dud. You made a mistake. What do you do? You keep him? No. The next draft, you bring out another quarterback, or you trade for one. Willdan made a mistake, okay? Out the door, and we get another one. Hopefully, we strike pay dirt this time. And I think we will. Now, what my general feeling is, we have an aging system in this city of utilities. You can see streets. When they got holes, potholes, and sidewalks are breaking down, you can see that. The public says, fix it. Now, you can't see the sewer lines and the storm drains under the ground, but they're aging too. We're over 100 years old as a city. We have to upgrade those systems. Look at LA. They haven't even begun to address their needs, their water pressures, their delivery system, anything. Boy, they're going to pay billions for what they're going to have to do. Look at the water pressure down at Adams Hill. Isn't that what we're doing going down there now on Glendale Avenue? That's to give new additional water pressure to Adams Hill. They've complained about it. They're getting it. Now, that's not cheap. That's costing money. The Chevy Chase reservoir ceiling was falling in. We had to fix it. So to say you can only put the cost of living on, and you're okay, no. We have to look at upgrading a system, some of which is 80, 90 years old. And by the time you get through one cycle, you'll be doing it again, because you can pave streets. And 20 years from now, you're going to be back paving some of those streets again because of the heavy usage. We have chromium 6 we're dealing with. We have all kinds of issues that come up. What's going to be next? What chemical are they going to find? The EPA going to find that we have to deal with? Where's the money going to come from? Grants? Maybe, maybe not. But you can't stand still. You need the water increase just to keep up with the existing system, what's going on. But you need the capital improvement dollars beyond that, and they're not cheap dollars for what you have to do underground. So that's why we have to do this. Now, I'm trying to remember when, back in May, or whenever it was, came forth, what was the one the staff recommended at the time?
55444.
Oh, that's the one I alone voted for. And we all directed you to come back with the 4444, right?
You told us that the most you would go was 5444, because that, and as we advertise that per Prop 218 notices, that would be the ceiling. We could consider things under that ceiling, but not above it.
Oh, that's right. The ceiling. So if I understand right, most of my colleagues want to go 4444. Okay. All four, but I don't like it. We're not building up the reserves that we're going to need. We're postponing this down the line to a council that's going to sit here for five years from now. That's going to be faced with the same thing again, passing the buck down the road. There's no way to get around it. It's not going to be any cheaper tomorrow to do the work. But if that's what my colleagues want to do, I'll go along with it because it's better than nothing. It's not going to give Steve Zern a lot of comfort or whatever. But we got to move forward on this. Correct the mistakes of Willdan, set the new rate structure, a new rate structure. I guess that's it, kind of, in a simplistic system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Devine?
Well, this, talking about pressure, water pressure and just plain pressure. In preparing for this really important decision, I felt it was imperative that I go back and, and review how this situation began. So I watched the, the videos of the hearings, the subsequent council deliberations, and the vote when the first rate increase was introduced. And that was in 2012. I also attended two of the GWP workshops that Mr. Zern conducted, and they were very comprehensive, just, just like tonight. And having done that, I've been trying to assimilate all the information, the concerns, and the comments of the, of everyone here, the experts, the residents, the other council members, to make my decision. First, during the, those March 2012 council deliberations, our city manager came up with the brilliant idea, and several council members agreed with him. And the idea was to have an ongoing task force of residents and business stakeholders to, to study the future of water rate hikes and the structure, so that everybody would be treated fairly. The recommendation of the task force was to be brought back to the council and thereby their decisions and their considerations considered by council. In response to that, there was a task force conducted, and it was mostly businessmen. It was not residents. And one of their recommendations was that there be a task force of residents and more communication between council to the residents before Proposition 218 would be delivered to the people. So I'm, I'm of the ilk that citizen participation in water rate hikes is imperative, and it's, and it should be encouraged. Secondly, I, the proposed ordinance fairly addresses the, the need to correct overcharges, paid for the water line or the fire line customers, but it also imposes this drought surcharge, which we're going to eliminate tonight, I guess, for six months, but it could, it could be inevitable. And I just don't feel it's fair to, to charge, to raise water rates. Our, our residents are conserving water. They've been successful. They've been, they've been doing it brilliantly. And to, to add this to, to their, their water rates is just, it goes against my beliefs. I realize that we're in a tough situation, but I think that, that I cannot, with a clear conscience, vote in favor of a water hike tonight, water rate increase tonight.
What would you suggest instead? I think all of us would love to not have a water rate increase.
Well, I know. I think that we have to, we should look at, at different ways and suggestions, solutions to conserve. I think, as I said, our citizens have done a great job of conserving, and I just don't think that we need to, that we should be punishing them at this point with raising their water rate.
Thank you, Ms. Devine. And I appreciate your sentiment. I have a, sort of, I'm taking all those things into consideration myself, but I come to a different conclusion. It's, it's true that our infrastructure is aging. It's true that things cost more as time progresses. Unfortunately, that's just... Unfortunately, that's just the reality of life. And that our utilities have to keep up with the needs that the city, that the city and its residents have. Now, it's also true that there was a, a rate plan implemented, or we thought was implemented in 2011, which basically was supposed to be an increase in water rates. But that didn't happen. It didn't happen. And it's also true that it, it was a windfall for most residents. It's a fact. But it's also true that our residents didn't ask for it. They thought that a rate plan was approved, that they were actually paying more. I mean, that's what they thought, because that's what they were told. The council approved it. It was based on a COSA that was adopted by the city. And they didn't, you know, they didn't complain that they're paying too much at the same time. Of course, they probably didn't realize that they're, they may actually be paying less. Meanwhile, of course, the, again, the costs associated with providing this service have grown. Meanwhile, the infrastructure has gotten older. Meanwhile, the need for additional funds has gotten greater as a result. So we have a situation where it's unfair to subject the residents to shock therapy by imposing a COSA that's too high, that's, that's just too much at, at once. And at the same time, it's unfair to, to the utility not to be able to fund its own programs and to provide services at cost. So it's, it's not, it's not an easy situation. And certainly, the, the plan that's recommended by the city, I'm opposed to. Again, that would be the kind of shock therapy that, that would just be fundamentally unfair to the residents of Glendale. Because bottom line is, no matter whether they've been paying less or more since 2011, from today till next year, their bill will go up by 5%, and that's just not fair. I think the 4444 plan is a realistic one in the sense that it does increase the rates, and it does allow for replenishment of the cash reserves by $4.4 million over four years. And one thing that allows me to sleep better at night is that, in reality, the 4444 plan shouldn't be thought of, of a plan that was implemented over four years, but really a plan that's, that's been implemented over, since 2011. I mean, it's, it's a much longer period. Of course, again, the immediate impact the residents will feel now. But in reality, in, in all fairness to, again, Glendale Water and Power and the city of Glendale, it's, it's a plan that's just sort of, had it been implemented in, you know, appropriately in 2011, we wouldn't be looking at this. So with, with some significant degree of discomfort, I think 4444 is the, the plan that I would be comfortable.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be glad to introduce the ordinance.
But I wanna, if you don't mind, ask a little more of our, our new councilperson who's baptism by fire. So, Ms. Devine, you're against any increase at this point? How do we get out of our hole? What's our hole? It's $9 million? And the longer we wait, we're losing money every day. So I wanna know what your, you know, what do you?
You said something about conservation. So how does conservation get the utility back into the black?
I just feel that at this time, it's, it's unfair. I think the citizens have, have conserved, and I don't, I just don't think that this is the time.
So do you want the utility to shut down, or do you want us to sell it? Because we can't operate it if it's losing money. You understand that, right?
Right, I do understand that. And I, I know it's, that's what I'm saying. It's a complex, it's a very tough decision.
But wait, don't we also owe it to people to be able to deliver water to them? So how do you deliver water to them if the utility can't function? I mean, if you have, I would love to hear an alternative.
Well, I, I think I go along with Mr., it was a Biggs or Briggs, that the transfers were, if we were not doing the transfers, then perhaps that money will help that saving that, those funds.
Not doing transfers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's all built in there. What you see is where we're at now. So the hole we're in includes all of that. This is a comprehensive pro forma, if you will, and that's what we base the COSA on. So, yeah, we, we stopped that transfer some years ago. All of that is built into here.
And, and there really hasn't been an increase, again, in reality, in actuality, in practice, since 2011.
I understand that.
I mean, and I'll be honest. I mean, this is the type of thing, it's such a hot-button issue with the community. I think it, it serves the council well to, you know, if we're not all on the exact same page in terms of whether it's 544 or 444, that we're at least acknowledging the fact that a increase is necessary. I mean, a vote against any increase seems to imply that we aren't doing everything we can. We haven't done everything we can. There is another way out of this mess, and that we, the four that vote for a increase, are, you know, the big bad meanies who just want to sock it to the public, which I can assure you is not the case. I mean, this is a hard choice. What's Hillary's book? Hard Choices? This is one of the hard choices. If, if councilmembers had to write books and talk about hard choices, this would certainly be a chapter, because it's not easy. It's one of the hardest things to do as a councilmember, is to make a decision that directly affects each and every single individual and business. So I just, I mean, I mean, to be quite honest with you, an abstention makes, makes it a little easier to swallow, rather than to vote no, because in that no is implicit that there's another way out of this mess, or that we're just trying to stick it to the people. So I'm, I just wanna say I'm uncomfortable with, if that's the, the insinuation that's going out there, I'm uncomfortable with that, because that is not the case. This is, for me, though, the very last resort that I'm, that I'm going to. And it, it hurts me, and it is not a popular decision. I realize that. But it's something that I feel has to be done.
And, and I appreciate that, Councilman Najarian. I know it's a tough decision, and I, I'm not insinuating any, anything like that, absolutely not. And if it is the pleasure of the council that I abstain, I will do so.
Well, look, if you think that we should follow your lead and not raise rates, I mean, I think if you want next week when we come back, maybe you can give us a plan for how the utility functions without the rate increase. I mean, if you have an idea of how to do that, I would love to hear it. If not, you know, you need to tell us how this is, how it would be responsible to, to vote against a rate increase. I mean, if it's, I'm gonna be symbolic, and so I'm gonna vote against it, because I know the rest of you are gonna vote for it, let us know. But if you really think there's another way, let us know what that is. And that, to me, those are the only two options.
Okay, we can do that.
If, if I can maybe take a step back, Mr. Ochoa. Can you just briefly give us a report on what will happen if there is no rate increase over the next three years?
If there is no rate increase, then the, the losses that you see at GWP water will only grow and expand. At some point, you even cross the line into not being able to pay all of your bills, meaning bonded indebtedness. And that really is not an option for us, because it, it becomes a matter of making policy as opposed to any other type of restriction on you. So you, you very readily run out of, of, of ground to walk on before you get to the water and you start to sink, literally.
That may happen in three to four years.
That would happen, that would happen in the next four to five, I believe, as you see the debt service coverage start to pull apart. You need to have some type of rate increase, because those costs, if only for the commodity charge, continue to grow. At least, our debt is, is straight line, but similar to what you saw 10 years ago, our capital structure, our debt structure is predicated on a series of increases in revenue to make sure we cover those costs. Now, if you said, you know, we need to pay those bills and not do anything else at all, well, then I think we get to, to Councilmember Friedman's point of saying, well, then you probably ought not be in the water business. And then you should get out of it before you ever can't treat the water, or you can't pump the water, or you can't deliver the water, long before we ever went belly up. And, and we had this type of discussion when we were talking electric rates, last time we were talking water rates. What we're trying to do is get to a point where we, we never have to have this discussion again. Make no mistake, we, we put ourselves in this boat by trying to take the empathetic step of, of not increasing rates at the wrong time, and not wanting to increase debt, but not having the discipline to pull in, rein in, capital spending. And that's where your staff let you down. You had a bunch of folks who said, we're engineers, we're not business people. And so we were hammers and everything looked like a nail, and we just went and implemented the, no disrespect to engineers, of course.
I'm listening.
But, but they, but that, that's effectively what happened. We're trying to get to a point with the business model we have where you will never have to have that discussion. Now, if you opt not to do any kind of rate increase, either you're going out of business, or before that happens, you're gonna sell the business.
Mr. Ochoa, if we stop the water business, who's gonna step in and deliver the water?
There are the folks. Easier said than done, but I, theoretically, you could, you know, contract with the, the folks across the river in LA, or across Alameda and Burbank, or, or even go to CV Water District, although they don't have the, they aren't large enough to do what we need to do.
And they're gonna charge us for that water.
Yeah, and you see, yes.
Savings?
You saw in, in Mr. Zern's slides what the DWP rates, what the CVW, WD rates are. And as I say, we don't know everything we, we would like to know about Burbank's costs. So I couldn't, I couldn't hypothesize that.
But they're gonna sock it to us. They're gonna make a nice profit on delivering water to us, which we're gonna pass on to every consumer in the city.
Or at least they would, because under 218, they couldn't charge more than the cost. But the, the point being that if you, if you want to be in the water rates, I think Mayor Sinani had hit, and Mr. Najarian as well, actually, all of you have, and even Councilmember Devine. In dreams begin responsibilities. And so if you dream of a water utility and you're gonna be in the water business, then so goes the responsibility to make sure that you balance your costs and your revenues. And at this point, we have fewer employees than we've had, I think, in, since the 1980s. We, at this point, have trimmed costs back as absolutely far as our, as we can discretionary, from a discretionary basis. I don't know how you get there without new revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. So, Mr. Weaver?
I introduce the ordinance.
Thank you. So that takes care of 9A, correct?
No.
And B, and B. Okay, very well.
Let's introduce it.
Yes.
Mayor Sinani and councilmembers, just for clarification, the ordinance has been introduced, the ordinance has been introduced with the 4444 scenario, correct?
There seems to be majority.
And we'll come back when?
We will come back next week with the ordinance again, and all of the resolutions which you had before you, however, with the 4444 scenario.
Right. And despite that, if there is any need for further discussion on this issue of why we shouldn't raise rates, I'll be more than willing to open that up. Okay, thank you. Next item, Mr. Dunn?
At item 12 is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Councilman may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Did I hear that right? Not a part of this agenda. So nobody can get up and start talking on the water rates.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. I'm gonna allow people to leave before we...
Sorry, see what's gonna happen here. Thank you for coming, consultants.
Hey. We have a number of speakers today. First Speaker is Joe Neary, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Oh, here's Joe Neary.
They've already got him. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Joe Neary. I've been a resident of Glendale for about 15 years. Came in from Hollywood Hills. Love it here. I live on Raymond Avenue between Bel Air Drive and Mountain Street, near, that's near Brand Park. I represent 38 families on this block. And 12 years ago, I came right here before City Council to petition them to finish, there's a half-block of substandard gutters that have been there for over 70 years. I have handouts right there that shows you what's been happening for, ever since I've been there. And I've talked to my neighbors, who, one of them's been there since the 50s, says that's been going on for a very long time. The rest of the street, the other half, has proper concrete gutters. And as you can see, proper concrete gutters would prevent the road and gutter erosion you see in the attached photos. There are many spots like this. We are on a hill, so the, the water flows down the hill quickly, eroding the asphalt. They use asphalt for gutter instead. And then the road bed, as you can see, the road bed. That's one of the things, they've been doing all the patches. Last time, you know, they just patched it. And it's like, I guess the same reason why they don't put asphalt in the storm drains or the aqueducts. It just wipes it away within probably a year or so. So, as a matter of fact, the entire length of Raymond Avenue has proper concrete gutters. We're like the forgotten half a block. And you'll see where I've put down the map, there's a, just a half a block. City Council back then said that they would try to attach this half-block to the Bel Air Drive Improvement Project, which you see right there. It's FY 2013, 2014. Well, they're doing that Bel Air Drive Improvement right now, and it's great, looks great. They got all the new gutters in. It's about six blocks. And it, as you can see, I'm right there in the corner. I'm so close, we're so close to getting proper gutters. And I was hoping that it would be included, but I talked to everybody there, and no, it's not included. So what I'm doing is asking for your help in completing this little half-block. When they complete the Bel Air Road Improvement Project, we'll be surrounded by proper gutters. And when they're done, we'll just be kind of an island by itself. It all have nice gutters, and, and, and basically, it'll be like an island of disrepair. However, we don't want the asphalt blacktop patches the Streets Department have been doing for decades, because that doesn't work. It just basically erodes away, as you can see in the pictures. And then, I know Mr. Weaver is a civil engineer. He knows that that's just a Band-Aid. And we're looking for a permanent fix. And we're just trying to get what the rest of the entire length of Raymond Avenue has for these past many decades. So that's basically it. I know I've, I've asked the Streets Department to go, of course, we have no money. And that's 12 years ago, and I was hoping maybe for the best. And I'm trying to figure out a way how I can get, simple thing as, concrete gutters in there. And they're so close, all the, you know, actually, all the construction equipment is parked on my street. And they're doing a great job, and it's gonna look great. Bel Air is gonna look fantastic. So I don't know if there's anything you guys can do or suggest, but the asphalt is just like a Band-Aid, keep going on there. And I have a feeling that I'll, we'll just be kind of forgotten until, you know, hopefully, you know.
You won't be forgotten.
Well, it's, I, I understand, everybody doesn't have any money these days, but this is a, every, the entire length of Raymond Avenue has those gutters. And it being on the, on, on the hill, it, it, any repair they do with asphalt, just, you know, within a year, it's, it's very, it's, it looks really bad.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Neary. I'll tell you that, I think not just I, but a couple of us have already passed on your email to Public Works. And I live right around the corner from you on Bel Air, so I have been watching for the last two and a half weeks the whole gutter situation, the concrete.
Yeah, that's a lot more than what I thought they would do.
And you're right. I don't understand why we would be, on Bel Air would be getting that.
We're getting a bid from the Contractor Sequel right now for the project.
For this, for this segment. Okay, there you have it.
For proper gutters, for concrete gutters. And then we'll be able to report back.
For your, for your portion of Raymond.
That little half, little half a, half a block.
See if we can do that as a, a change order to that existing project.
That'd be great, because we are working right there already. So it won't be another 12 years.
Okay, 'cause I have a little 92-year-old lady across the street and going to...
Guess I'll cut out the asphalt, open up towards good, and then replace it with the AC, and then the concrete gutter.
We have a lot of happy people there.
Concrete will carry the water.
Mr. Weaver? Would you like to submit a... Mr. Weaver? Would you like to submit a bid there?
No, 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 I'm aware of what he's saying, putting asphalt on asphalt, it just peels.
Oh, yeah, it does, it doesn't work.
Potable, that's a little different.
Would someone let me know, because last time, I thought, I knew it was going to take a while, but 12 years, and it's a great thing.
Mr. Galanian is getting that bid, and even if we had to do it with city resources, city forces, we're there, it makes sense to do it, so Rubik will be in contact with you very soon.
Great, great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Neary. Margaret Hammond, followed by Aram Kazazin.
Good to see you. Haven't been here for a while, but I'm feeling better, stronger. My name is Margaret Hammond, 60-year resident of Glendale. I love Glendale, and when I travel to other cities, I went to a city today, next door to us, I was dumbfounded at the houses in the area, how rundown, I just couldn't believe it. But anyway, I'm not going to go there, I guess I hadn't visited on that area for a while. My bulky item pickup, we do have a lot of items hanging around down there in South Glendale. I should start taking pictures of them with my camera, but whatever, my grandson keeps telling me he'll help me to perfect that particular job. But anyway, please keep on picking up and calling in and getting that stuff picked up. Make our neighborhood stay the way it is now and not go downhill. National Night Out for the Police Department, August the 5th. I don't know how many of you remember that, but it's very important, you know, neighborhoods get together. I know on Adams Hill, they have several small parties and so forth and so on, and it's wonderful, they all enjoy it. And the one at Pacific Park, which Lenore and I do, the one at Pacific Park, have done, because there's no homeowners group there, we've done it there for years, and we get a large turnout, people really enjoy it. I'm really here for one particular thing. I happen to be a member of a commission in the city, and taking care of graffiti and trash and so forth. The thing that we came up with, came, happened to our group, was that the Keep America Beautiful gave us $20,000 to put a parklet in on Brand Boulevard. That was in August of 2013. The city finally, they went through a lot of plans, a lot of whatever, so forth and so on, and then all of a sudden came back, I guess it was in April, decided that they really couldn't do it, that it was too many disability requirements and so forth and so on. So, they came back, and they talked to Keep America Beautiful, who said, "Yes, we know that's, that's too bad that happened, but we are willing to give you the money to improve your downtown area, whether it's a park, whatever it is in the area." So, that was in June, we were told that. We had no word before that time, that at our June meeting, we were told, "Yes, we can keep the money, but, and they will give us an extension, we aren't sure what the extension is, but whatever it is, you know, we'll work with it." Well, we finally heard in June, after several meetings of the Subcommittee, that they would extend it through to the end of December. Well, that was fine and good. To me, the money should be used to improve downtown Glendale. The chess park, I think, is a horrendous mess. If you go through it, it's nothing, it's like being in a cooker oven to go in there, it's so hot with all the cement, and there's no overhead shade, nothing. I felt that that's where the money should go, to improve that area, and it would go to benefit the most people, at least, you know, what, 100,000 people go through that area all the time, from the parking through to Brand and so forth. So, in the first place, I did contact Jess Duran, the Parks Department, and said, I, me as a person, not my committee, and said to him, "There's this money, I think we could use it for good use." Anyway, I didn't get any answer, but I did contact the Downtown Glendale Association, and they sent me a letter, and it was sent to the City of Glendale, to the committee at 633 East Broadway. I was never told, it's addressed to me, the envelope is addressed to me, I was never notified that they had sent me that letter. And at the meeting finally, in July, it was, here's the letter that this was sent to you. I said, "Well, you know..." In the meantime, there had been a vote taken in a way that kept out any money going to the park, department, to the parks. It's going to be take, going to the gardens, the community gardens, $12,000 of the money, and maybe $2,000 or $3,000 for the park to put in some trees and going elsewhere. We, the committee as a whole was never allowed to vote on it, was only a Subcommittee that offered their suggestion. And then, there was a motion made by one of the members in a way that it cut off any suggestions or any complaints about where the money was going. I personally feel that it should have gone for where it would benefit the most people. And I am very disturbed about the fact that this letter was never given to me, and that I have had, I had no way to respond to the gentleman, who is Rick Lemo, by the way, that sent me the letter. But I do not feel it was handled properly, and I still feel that $12,000 going to those gardens, which we, our group had already given money to when they were started up, that I don't feel that that is the best use of the money. So, that's my discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Is there, do we, can we, do we exercise any jurisdiction over any of that?
I can have, I'll make sure Mr. Duran circles back to him.
Yeah, please do, thank you. Aram Kazazin, followed by Lenore Solis.
Good evening again. I don't come here very often, so I thought I'm here to all make use of my time, by the way. Number one, I was at the cruise night, I had my cars there, it was a great night, and I really like to thank all the staff that, putting that cruise night together. It was a wonderful, wonderful evening, and I saw some of you there enjoying, and that was great, great for me to see some of the council members there, also the city manager was there, but he didn't stop by and look at my cars, I guess he was scared, you know, they might fire up by themselves, right? Okay, but I'm proud, because I've been working on my cars now for 50 years, I build those cars on my own hands, I, you know, I do all the work myself on them, so it's a proud thing, hopefully, some of my children will have the benefit and take over from me someday. Now, I also would like to mention that, you know, if you look at downtown San Diego, how the people walk, the sidewalks in downtown San Diego are 20 feet wide, so they're able to put more chairs, more tables, more pleasant atmosphere. We build buildings here, we're trying to cut down the sidewalks to eight feet, 10 feet, all the new buildings are, have small, small sidewalks in front of them, where they don't have that environment where you can outside sitting, have the, you have new buildings coming in with a narrow sidewalks. Why are we doing that? Why don't we look into that? You go downtown San Diego, hundreds of people walking, because 20 feet sidewalk you can walk on, including the chairs and tables. Over here, we have 10-foot, you put the chairs on tables, you only have two or three feet you're walking through. So, we really have to start looking at other things to see what we can do. The third question I have is, I'll just mention one thing quickly, that the 36% compounded increase was voted on by Dave Weaver, Aram Najarian, and John Draymond, and Bob Yusofyan, and Contor voted against it, and nobody tried to tell them, "No, you have to vote for it," so they have the right, anybody wants to vote, they have the right.
Mr. Kazazin, I have to stop you, please don't continue on that.
Okay, no. Also, there's one question I like to ask, what happened to the $60 million water bond we received? Where is that money? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kazazin. Next speaker, Lenore Solis, followed by Beatrix Schwartz.
Good evening, Lenore Solis, resident of Glendale. I'm also here to talk about the Keep America Beautiful grant of $20,000 that the Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale received. And unfortunately, they were, you know, if we start from the beginning, we have a mission statement, and one of our main priorities in our committee is graffiti paintout. We purchase all the supplies for graffiti paintout. So, it's all about beautification. We got grants, and we helped build the community gardens. You know, we've been, we've been very involved in trying to beautify the city, we plant trees, along with, you know, another organization. And parklet was, didn't really fall within our mission statement, and it was really unfortunate that they, I guess it's Planning Department now, and the person who was the chair at the time, decided to submit a grant application without bringing it before our committee. So, we found out that we had applied for this grant when we got the grant, and some of the members didn't even know what a parklet was. I mean, I live, I live here in Glendale, and I know, I don't think we have any, but I know we do have some in, you know, near us in Silver Lake and other areas. So, I mean, they are something that people, people want to do. And so, even though it didn't fall within our mission statement, we all thought, "Okay", you know, I mean, it's something, something positive for downtown, let's do it. And then, unfortunately, because of whatever ADA requirements, the slope was too steep or whatever, and after many, many staff hours were spent on the project, they found out that they were unable to accomplish that with the amount of money, there were no additional resources that would be made available for that, so they weren't able to move forward with a parklet. So, they had a committee set up, the committee was going to review what projects the money should be spent on. And Margaret thought, "Well, gee, you know, that chess park, it really needs some help, because nobody sits there, it's too hot." So, she immediately contacted the Merchants Business Association, and Mr. Lemo responded saying, "Yes, we definitely would like to be, you know, to be considered for that." You know, "What do we need to do to get that money?" But unfortunately, the Subcommittee assigned to this decided that they wanted to dole out the money. Some people want to give $1,000 to Daley for a mural that they're doing, or other people want to give $12,000 to the community gardens for whatever, even though we've already spent so much grant money and staff hours on that, they want to give. So, instead of using the $20,000 on one project that we could point our fingers to and say, "Look, that's what we did," they're doling it out, $1,000 here, $3,000 there, $12,000 over here. And you know, when you get a $20,000 grant and you break it up like that, you know, you really lose, I mean, the effectiveness of what, of what you could have done with it. And you know, we have over $100,000 in our, in our coffers, and it was unfortunate that we were never able, you know, Mr. Engel was tasked with finding out what it would cost to do some improvements at the, at the chess park, but we never ever saw any numbers, we never saw, I mean, how much would it cost? We have $20,000, would it cost $25,000, would it cost $30,000? You know, would our committee be willing to commit another $10,000? Then we heard that the Parks Department said, "Well, they don't have any additional monies or resources, so if you plant anything there, they can't take, you know, they can't do any upkeep." Then somebody said, "Oh, you know, I think Mr. Foy came back and said, 'Well, you know, the Civic Center, they would like to do some planting in the front.'" And, but no, nobody wanted to vote for that. It was just the way the whole thing was handled, it just, it just was not done properly, it was not, there was no, there was not adequate transparency. You know, I mean, it just seems like, like, they didn't tell us they were even applying for it, then we get it, then they spend all these hours, and then we can't do it. I mean, it just, the whole thing just, just was so, done so poorly. And I just would hope that, that we could learn from this experience, so that, I mean, you know, when you take $20,000 that somebody gives you to beautify downtown Glendale, and then you dole it out, $1,000 and $3,000, it's just stupid. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Solis.
Sorry, I'm lost. Kind of get what you're saying, but just so I understand, so you had a Subcommittee that recommended to the full committee, and they voted. And so, the full committee did vote on this, this plan?
Unfortunately, Mr. Engel asked for a motion, and people, I guess, didn't understand it, so what happened was, they ended up cutting off, so nobody really could discuss it or make any changes to the...
But they did vote.
They voted on it, even though Mr. Foy told us that one of the things that they're voting on cannot be done. They voted on it anyway.
Okay.
It's just a mess.
So, are you asking, what are you asking us to do?
I'm just saying, you know what, look into this and make sure it doesn't happen again, because it sure is a waste of a $20,000 grant.
Okay, we'll have staff just let us know what happened, and if there's anything that we can do to help any of the other projects.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Solis.
Are there minutes, I'm sorry, are there minutes taken of those meetings?
Very important, you don't know it's...
I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of money going around, and we should, they should have some sort of accountability, if not to council, to public at large.
Who's the secretary? Don't answer, don't answer.
No names.
Don't answer, I know, that's why I'm saying, don't answer.
Okay. Beatrix Schwartz, followed by Vartan Arakelyan.
Good evening. My name is Beatrix Schwartz, and I want to talk today about, again, about 2625 Hermosa Avenue. We had a council meeting about that, I think, like, a month or two months ago, but before I do that, I just want to ask two really quick questions. One other question is, if the City of Glendale could cut the trees instead of the spring and the fall, because we're having a lot of birds in the spring, and they're cutting down the nests, and the birds are protected, and I don't think there's a reason why we have to do that in the spring. If you guys could think about it, cutting the trees in the fall, that would be great. Because they come down our street in the spring, they just did that, and I was kind of like, I can't believe, I love birds, and my son does. So, it's just something to think about. And the other thing, I was wondering, you guys talked about the water, and I know I shouldn't bring it up now, but I was just thinking, a great way to save water is planting California natives. They are really cool, and that looks a lot better than a fake lawn. Okay.
Thank you. And yeah, saving water was not on the agenda, so if you want to talk about it...
Okay, cool, that was just my suggestion, I'm doing this already in my home, and it looks so beautiful, and people just love it.
Okay.
Okay, now, 2625 Hermosa Avenue. It has been brought to our attention, okay, I'm going to bring the, this is 2625 Hermosa Ave., that's DRB case 1308300A. I'm here to speak on the behalf of the neighbors again of Hermosa Avenue. It has been brought to our attention that the building and safety has required a grading plan for that project, that was the one we have not appealed. And they want to raise, actually, they will do that, the building by 18 inches, but it's a major change to the project, and it's also, we want to know what will happen to the wall, because will the wall have to be removed? Because that was something we were really concerned about. It is a historical piece, all the, a lot of the buildings in our, on our street have those beautiful walls. So, we'd like to, that that case will be reopened, and we have a say on that. That's it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. Vartan Arakelyan, followed by Richard Diradurian.
My name is Vartan Arakelyan, Mr. Mayor, Member of Commission. I'm the neighbor immediately adjacent to the property, it being at 2625 Hermosa Avenue, which is on my right side to the, on my property. The Art of the Town Developer has also presented a similar three-unit project located at 2631 Hermosa Avenue, which is next after 2625. I was part of this neighborhood that appealed the DRB-approved plan, which the City Council upheld, requested the developer to reduce a two-story building duplex in the front to a one-story unit. I was distressed to know, learned that required a grading plan that was never part of the original DRB hearing now, calls for the these two-story building next to my house now be raised in additional 18-inch. With a small calculation, would be, can be said that it's going to be like about 12 to 14 truck loading, or 18-inch for raising for that. So, this is not a mayor, minor... So this is not a mayor, minor, I mean, changes. As characterized by the planting staff, and therefore, a new DRB hearing should be held. Raising this building an additional 18-inch will affect my privacy, and will make this path the highest level in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arakalian. Richard Diradurian.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Richard Diradurian, and I live at 2618 Hermosa Avenue, and again, I'm speaking about this case that was appealed to City Council a couple months ago, I guess. Request is being made tonight regarding the approved DRB project located at 2625 Hermosa Avenue, and we request that the council direct and make sure that the planning director reopen this DRB case. A required grading plan from Building and Safety was never discussed during the initial DRB hearing and approval process. The nature of the DRB is that it's an ongoing discretionary hearing. When a major change is proposed, it is the obligation to have the public input be heard. It is astounding that when I confronted one of the planning staff after relating the complete history of this project and the adjacent lot, its appeal and why it was appealed, that gentleman, Mr. Tim Foes, stated, well, this is just a minor change. Raising the grade an additional 18 inches on a two-story home that already was rejected by your council several weeks ago, and the request at that time, what the developer has to do is take the proposed two-story building and reduce it to a one-story, that was already the decision, and to understand what took place on the lot next door, and for that planner to tell me that raising now the approved plan that was never appealed, because we didn't have enough money to appeal it, an additional 18 inches is just astounding, and it's just a slap in the face to us. It's not a minor change, it's a major change. It was never part of the original DRB hearing, and if the DRB means anything, whether it's the public or the council, then the public's input should be heard, period. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Diradurian.
My understanding, sir, is Mr. Galanian, our Director of Community Development, has spoken with these folks at length, and his professional judgment is that, no, it is not a major change. I would defer to legal to see if we have the authority to reopen and somehow go back and undo a vested development right that these folks have secured through our process.
And if our conclusion is that it's not a major change, do these fine people have any recourse?
At this point, no. They appealed the one house, not the other house. The first house, the one that was not appealed, the 18-inch grade differential, has been vested. I mean, I would defer to City Attorney's Office, but that's my understanding.
Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, I don't have all of the facts and details, considering the status of the entitlements, whether or not building permits have been pulled, so on and so forth. So we'll have to take a look at that and report back on what, if anything, can be done to remedy the situation as has been described.
Well, we also need to find out if it really is a situation. If it just really is a major change, and how it affects the aesthetics of the house.
Exactly.
I mean, the first step, yeah.
Take a look at it.
Yes, Ms. Friedman?
So I very rarely agree with Mr. Kazazian on anything, but I will say that I agree with him about the narrow sidewalks. To me, I'm thinking of Central, and I know that happened because we widened the road, and I know people already own property there, but I think we should think about the setbacks for future development on Central, because they are large buildings and they're very close to the street, and he's correct that it prohibits future outdoor uses, and I just feel that the sidewalks there look very narrow for an urban, you know, more of an urban area. So I'd like us, at some point, if somebody else agrees, to take a look at that, and whether we should add a development standard that would require deeper setback. Is there anybody who would?
I agree with that.
I would, yeah.
And also, Pacific is even worse than Central.
Pacific, I don't think it's going to have the development standard, but, but yeah, I mean, we should look at that with all of our, all of our areas that are going to have development that's not just single-family or two-story buildings. If we're looking at more urban feel for our areas, we need to be sure that the sidewalks are commensurate.
Absolutely.
A sidewalk width that's appropriate on Pacific is not appropriate on Central, so...
Sidewalks with lots of trees make it beautiful to walk, shade.
We may not...
We should have had this discussion, frankly, about two years ago, but...
When I wasn't there. I wasn't there.
Actually, that was before me, too, because that was downtown specific plan, so that was...
I think that was 2006.
2006.
Freight train ran through.
Eight years ago.
Sorry, I can't.
The city manager will be happy to discuss it with you after the meeting. Or maybe the assistant city manager.
Mr. Dunne, next item, new business? We have some new business?
Yes.
Yes, there are two motions. One is to initiate litigation, and the other is to hire a law firm, and I believe Mr. Najarian and Ms. Devine have those motions in front of them, and perhaps they would like to read them into the record.
Shall we start with Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to initiate legal action in the Sacramento Superior Court against the California State Department of Finance and other defendants to be identified pertaining to the implementation of the Dissolution Act and authorization of the repayment of city agency loans. The precise name of the action, all the defendants, and the full scope of the action shall be disclosed to any person upon inquiry once the action has commenced. The city attorney is authorized to seek appropriate relief, including writ relief as authorized by the council. The city attorney is further authorized to incur any and all expenses necessary in connection with said matter.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Do we have a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mary Sonanian?
Yes. Ms. Devine, next one.
And I hereby move that the city attorney is hereby authorized to finalize negotiations of and to enter into a retainer agreement to utilize the legal services of Burke Williams and Sorensen LLP, principally partners Leah Castella and Sue Block, to assist the city attorney in representing the interests of the City of Glendale in a legal action the council has previously authorized the city attorney to institute against the State Department of Finance and other defendants, but which action has not yet been filed. The precise name of the matter shall be made public to any person so requesting disclosure at the time the matter is filed and served.
Second. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mary Sonanian?
Yes.
Who will we adjourn?
We're adjourned at 10:03 PM.